We're here, we're here.
Small wonders.
Yep. Dexter, would you wanna?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. You had a chance to visit the minutes?
Yes, I have, James. I read them on, online, and I'm assuming that's the same deal. So I'm gonna move that the proceedings of the Board of County Commissioners for Montezuma County's meeting of April 2nd be approved.
Second.
And moved in second and to approve the minutes for the proceedings of the Montezuma County Board of Commissioners for April 2nd, 2018 be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Doing good.
Good, a little better, a little better. Got a little something going in there.
Little better, yes.
Springtime temperatures are better, I think I can see.
Yes, they are.
I was up in Denver at the car show, so I missed that thunderstorm Saturday night.
Yeah, it was a dandy.
Precise.
We actually have mud. We have mud around here, yeah.
What, what is mud?
Yeah, I know. It's this rare condition where soil gets soaked in water.
Let's go down that one first, then we can look at the snowfall totals.
There it is. It's the thirty day.
That'd be pre-18. I hope you got pre-18. No, yeah, it's like that one there.
Where's my guy?
Yeah, there we go, there we got it. Okay. March grew exceptionally dry once again, twenty-two percent of normal. Not much to speak of there, so for the year, only about one and a quarter inches of rain and just forty-five percent of normal. Good start to April here, sneak preview poured four-one inches, I found in a rain gauge from that storm Saturday night. So we're about forty percent of normal for April already after the first week. Temperatures are really nice. I was impressed watching the TV weather. People up in Denver, they reported that had temperatures in the upper seventies here. Pretty nice. Snowfall. There's our grand total for April, two and a half inches. Normal for about five point four inches, only forty-six percent of normal. And look at the total for the entire winter season to date, almost eight inches. Only twenty-two percent of normal here in Cortez. That's the least snow I've ever reported for, for an entire winter season. In past winter seasons, I've measured anywhere from eighteen inches to seventy-five inches, so this this sets a new record in my twenty years of observations here.
Bad record.
Yep.
A bad record.
Yeah, bad record is right, yeah. The, at least the, the mountains are doing better, the still tell, water content is right around fifty percent or so, so get some relief there. Take a look at that later. And for the thirteen month report.
Now Denver is reporting, they got two, a little over two feet up there in some of their mountains. Copper Mountain and up in there, they, they got a bunch out of this last storm.
A lot of the ski resorts got dumped on this weekend, and this has even closed for the season already. So, this March is pretty much like last March, only forty percent of normal a year ago. And, yeah, looking at our seasonal total, keeps slipping quite precipitously. We sure need some wet months to, to start making up that deficit, but here we go. We start sliding downhill in terms of rainfall, month by month here. We go from, it declines in, in April from March, less than May, and then here comes June, our driest month of the year before the monsoon season arrives.
We need another miracle May like we had here a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah, we need spring to hurry up and start dumping that stuff to get us over the dry, the dry hump. And looking at the thirty day forecast, here's why the spring snowfall would be really important. Once again, above normal temperatures for us. And, draw her old please, below normal precipitation. The old ridge drought pattern is reflectiveness. The jet stream goes north of us, and the storm, the storm tracks along a jet stream, and then it dips well into the mid-south, keeping them in cold, cold air here as the temperatures up there. I forgot to show the temperatures coming back on this.
Into the ninety?
Probably square to the ninety, yeah, it's very similar. Once again, three month outlook, April, May, June, well above normal for temperatures. Precipitation once again, below normal.
I hope you're wrong, James.
Here's open, yeah.
I hope you're wrong.
Here's open, yeah, let's, let's get, let's get a break in the pattern here to get some nice, wet weather. Spring, we need, sure need that to hurry up. And, then we've got the, uh, yeah, the drought, the drought map. Keeps steadily getting worse. This, this shade of red, that is extreme drought for the entire four corners. A lot of Arizona, a lot of northern New Mexico, northern Texas, the Panhandle, and Texas, Panama, the Oklahoma Panhandle is in the worst drought category. Extreme drought right now. Montana, a year ago, they were suffering a lot of drought up there, northeast Montana, but they had, they've had a lot of snow up there. And so their situation has gotten a lot better. But you have this persistent dry pad in all winter, it's really starting to show up in the drought situation here. Our local fire danger rating now is high. And, the, um, snow tell, water content. Yeah, forty-seven percent above for us, forty-nine percent for the Rio Grande basin. And you can see, the further north you go, the better it gets. They're closer to that, to that Pacific Northwest storm tracks, and they've been getting more snow in northern Colorado, get the ski resorts happy. But down here, yeah, we're still suffering, at least it's not as bad as January, we were down to twenty percent of normal. The snows we've gotten in the mountains have helped somewhat. So, I guess they're planning a full, a full allocation of water this, this summer. But seeing how severely dry we have been so far, makes me wonder if they can hold some of that in reserve for next year, if we use up a lot this year, and the situation continues, I wonder what'll happen next year.
If we have winter like we have this year, next year, we will all be in tough shape.
Yeah, we don't want to get as bad as Cape Town, South Africa. They've had three years of extreme drought in a row, their reservoirs are down to thirteen percent of capacity. About three, three major reservoirs they have. All four million residents in the city, all those households are rationed to thirteen gallons of water a day. For everything. Bathing, shower, laundry, washing, washing dishes. All you get is thirteen gallons a day. And if it, if it continues to get worse for them, they'll shut off water for all the households and save it for priority, and still is just like hospitals. So we sure know we don't want to get in a situation like that here.
We don't want some of that.
Uh-uh, sure don't. Forecast this week, getting steadily warmer to midweek. The weather service is forecasting seventy, seventy-eight degrees by Wednesday. Low temperatures in the forties. But Friday will have a brief cold spell. Instead of mid-seventies, it'll be mid-forties with the nighttime low in the, in the low twenties. But then starts warming, warming up again in the weekend, so there's our classic spring pattern. The cold air in the north is doing badly with the warm air in the south. But you can see from our, now seventy degree temperatures starting to show up here, so sun's getting higher in the sky, the sunlight is more intense, and the days are longer, so summer will not be denied. It'll get here eventually. Meanwhile, the upper Midwest, it's snowing, still snowing. A town in northern Michigan this morning reported twenty-four below zero. The coldest temperature ever reported in Michigan for April. Set an all-time record for the entire state. Snowing in the Dakotas and Minnesota and Wisconsin and Illinois and Michigan. Chicago Cubs are supposed to have the season open this morning. It's snowing in Chicago. Two inches of snow on top of the tarp on the field, so, yeah, they didn't know if they're gonna get that game in. Most, about two-thirds of the teams this weekend, they were playing the temperatures in, in the thirties. A very cold start to the baseball season. So there is our situation in a nutshell. Draining warmer here, and the Midwest is still cold, but there's a, there's a very jammed up weather, weather pattern, much like, like, like a traffic jam in the interstate, backed up behind a, a truck that's overturned on the interstate or something. We had a blocking ridge of high pressure over Greenland. Everything stacked up behind and not moving, but that ridge is broken down, so everything's starting to move west to east again, ridges and troughs, so we can expect more variability in our, in our weather. Hopefully that'll give us a better chance of getting some sort of precipitation for the rest of the spring. We'll see what happens anyway.
There's still an El Nino ocean current?
A weak, a lot, yeah, a weak La Nina.
A weak.
They were forecasting that to turn into a weak El Nino this summer. However, they'd made the same forecast last year, and that busted. Instead, over the summer, they got a weak La Nina, and that made the hurricane season worse in Atlantic. So we'll see if, if that forecast comes true. There it is in a nutshell. Enjoy the sunshine this week.
Yep.
Sustained apart in Florida the rest of the, rest of the week.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, James.
Open that up. Public comment, if anybody has a comment they would like to make, if you come up from the podium, state your name and address.
Can you get my there? That's fine. Ellen Foster, two-five-three-one-four, County Road T, Dolores. I was hoping that Sheriff Nowland would be here. I just wanted to, and I know he's gonna be here later on in the day, and so maybe you can ask him this question for me. My mother-in-law received a letter from Sheriff Nowland, Montezuma County Sheriff's Department. Also, County Sheriffs of Colorado, asking for a donation. Money to support professional training, promote crime and drug prevention, and improve public safety. Well, first of all, I wonder how she got on this mailing list. I mean, I've, I've been asking around, and no one else that I, I know has gotten this letter. She's in her mid-eighties. And then, I just don't think it's right that the sheriff should be trying to raise money through public mailings. I mean, that's what we have taxes for. And, um, they show some statistics on the back here that are statewide statistics, which give you the impression that things are really, really bad. I mean, I would think that maybe you would put Montezuma County statistics on here. And, I guess my real question for him is, what percentage of this money will actually be spent in Montezuma County? So. You can have this one.
Do you want to have a copy of it? Do you want to keep?
Nope. She won't be sending them anymore.
Make sure she can't.
Hi, Jill Carlson. My address is four-two-seven Texas Street, Cortez. I'm here today as a private citizen who regularly engages with families and children in this county. I think everyone's aware of the recent departure of Mr. Forkner. I know the city, or the county has posted for this position, and that the job posting is scheduled to close on Friday. I just am here today to employ our commissioners to be very cognizant and thoughtful in hiring the next person to take over this position. This is an agency that interacts with the majority of our county. This is a very important position, and I know there's very passionate caseworkers who work within the department. But rather than just making sure we have someone in line to lead the department, so that we have someone there, I would just ask for the commissioners to be very thoughtful in the selection process, and if there's a deficit on what that person needs to have, I would urge you to reach out to other counties who have hired for this position, to make sure we have someone who's going to support our local citizens that are going through arguably very difficult times when they're dealing with the department. Thank you.
I'll address that.
Thank you.
So, the commissioners, I guarantee you, will make sure that we pick the rightest person, but I feel like we've had failures in the past, and those failures have always been on a recommendation from somebody else. We're not gonna let that happen this time, and we know multiple directors throughout the state, Colorado, very good directors, that can help us in this endeavor.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Jill. Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public comment. And you go with the road department.
Got some rain on them roads, huh, man?
Yeah, we did.
Good morning.
So your, your plan changed after the weekend?
No, it's the same.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just talking. It messed up everything.
We were already ahead of it, because we'd been blading with water trucks. We didn't think it was gonna rain, so we didn't wait for any of it, yeah. But we, no, we're, we're right on track this morning. Didn't what we were planning. It was nice to have the rain.
Yeah, that was a nice, I haven't seen muddies in a while, and I forgot what mud is like.
We were talking about laying down, and it, it, the saw, auction just because it was so nice, yeah. Slipped and fell, you did it on purpose. Yeah, I'm not sure. There, everybody got one?
Yeah, that's all right, I'll get one. I have plenty.
Okay, on the schedule, Cortez, last week, um, got that little piece of Road L ground out, we put some smooth back to it, and put a little bit of mag chloride on, sealed it up for the couple of weeks here. And then we'll get started later when we get the trucks back. So in the meantime, they're kind of split up and moved up to the Dolores Norwood Road to assist with some water trucks up there. And then also doing some general maintenance down here, and filling in with some help out on Lebanon Road, so they're busy for the next two weeks just to keep the two bigger projects going. Mankas, they're with Dolores too. They got their two water trucks, and they're up there helping haul water for the next two weeks. Last, this week with Dolores, last week, they went up and they, they prepped the road, and they were, we got some water up there with three water trucks, got to take everything out of Dolores River, nothing's up there. So it's a long haul, but we got it prepped and got it rolled in, and then we fixed the road going into hay camp, so they were ready to go with trucks this morning, and then that's where they're at this morning, is haul gravel up Dolores Norwood Road, so. They've got twelve trucks on, with four water trucks, so it's, that's where we're at today, so if you want to go look for elk, go around the other way. Well, the hornets don't come up that side. So, but we do have our signs up, we got everything up, and everybody knows we're there, and it's, it's a good time here, it's very low in traffic. We had no issues with traffic last week when we was prepping the road, so it's a good time to get it done, so. And you had to go look at it, didn't you? Which is good. So this week, it's gonna be busy next ten days, or eight days. I think we can finish in eight days. If we get seven rounds a day, we'll wrap it up in eight days, so. And that's without working almost three days during the weekend, so I think we'll be good, so. Roundup. Last week finished up Road 21. We've still got a culvert to put in out there when everything settles down. We've got a little issue with some property owners through one stretch there to finish, but all in all, that two miles is gravelled. We'll come back and shape it, make it look a little smoother when we get ready to put some mag chloride on it. But we got that little two-mile project done, which was needing gravel pretty bad, so we were pleased to get that done. Meantime, that crew took over all the grinding, after they got done with Cortez, they went to Road W, they finished Road W, cut it ground, and laid back down. That's a tricky one there, because there was a bunch of river running underneath it. And I think back in the day, there was a lot of swamp there, and they just threw a bunch of river rock up, and put about an inch and a half of gravel on it, and we were, we were knocking the teeth off that drum. It was, it was pretty bad, but we got through it. And got it laid back down. I don't know how that'll last, you know, until we get these trucks back, we can't do much except babysit it. And then get back to it. As quick as we get these trucks back, that'll be the next project, will be to gravel Road W and get something on it. Because it's just real bony. There's just not much there to hold, so. But then we got, moved over to Road 425, and they're there this morning, and it's very deep and very hard, so it's slowing it down, so this schedule on the grinding may stretch out an extra day or two there. Hopefully we'll get through this one curve where there's a lot of overlays and repairs over the years, and it'll speed back up again, but all in all, they're moving along real well. We gotta get over Mankas, we got about four-tenths of a mile there to grind up and lay back down. And then spend a week just cleaning them all up, and maybe mag chloride them a little bit, till we can get gravel on them and hold them, so.
That worked really well on El Road.
Didn't it though?
Yeah.
You get a little bit of that asphalt and soak it in, roll it tight, so. W scares me because of the bony rocks, and it's just, we may have to blade the marbles off and do it again, but as soon as we get the trucks off the mountain, we'll be there, so. Of course, trucks are hauling to Dolores Norwood for the next eight days, maybe one more day after that, depending on how well it goes. Crushing continues, we got some gradations back, our class six is right where we want it to be, and we're still taking some rock for chips for next year, and everything's balancing out really well. They're very pleased to see the numbers on that. Grinder, like I said, he worked last week on those two roads, he's on twenty-five. At the rate he was going last week, we kind of penciled him in for three days, but I, the, things are slowing down. I got a feeling.
It takes me a little longer.
Yeah, if you don't get going there, we're gonna be stretching out another day or two, so. But all in all, that's the big projects, so Melissa was right, we would have been, we're trying to blade roads this morning because of the rain, but we were actually caught up. Now, I'm not saying we had every road, but the bigger share of the roads were bladed and watered and done before we started this, because we didn't know it was gonna rain, for one, but we knew we were gonna be busy for about two weeks too, so. And I think all in all, we're doing pretty good on that. Hopefully don't have any outdoings.
Do you know when four corners are gonna fire up there?
Yeah, they're working on it. I stopped in here last week and looked, and they were checking the scales and certifying those, they're working on the drum, and so there's activity there. Road L, we're looking at maybe second week in May, we'll hit it. First week, kind of depends on them and their plan, but they're working on it. But they'd like to be ready to go by the second week in May. So that gives us a month here to do these two projects, and then get back down here and build that up there in the bottom of L, and get it ready. And timing wise, it works real well. We just get that up and roll down tight, and then let them pave over it, and it'll all be done, so hopefully Road L's done by second week in May. I did contact our striper that worked for us last year. He's got some very good prices, so we'll probably use him again. He's out of Montrose. He likes to schedule his work around the city of Cortez and what they're doing. But for this project, he'll try to be in to take care of the paint striping on Road L and twenty-six, just as soon as we come off of it, or as quickly as we can. I'd like to get it done while still clean, and, and get it all marked in, so. So that was good. We do have mag chloride ordered for the Dolores Norwood Road. It's six loads on the books. They'll have five trucks there for us on the twenty-fourth, twenty-third, we're just seeing how it goes this week. But we'll put that mag on just as soon as we get off of it, while it's nice and damp and wet, and get it sealed up for the summer, so. Your request last week for signs on thirty-one, we did find a pretty neat-looking little sign. It's kind of a bicycle hiking-type emblem. And they will put some, I think we'll go ahead and put some advisory twenty-five mile an hours down through the curves there with them. And kind of do that going up and down the hill. It's kind of like share of the road with the four-wheeler, looking sign, so that's about the best we can come up with, as standard, so. We did find those, and we'll get those ordered and get those up for you, so. We do have an agreement in, big screen today. This is with the Bureau Reclamation. John, I brought this for you to review. It's not a contract so much as it is an agreement. With the Bureau Reclamation, to use their easement to get water at that location out there, by that storage unit. So basically, it's just some terms that we agreed to with a little bit of gravel to keep it in shape, not to get on top of their siphon pipes, we put some barriers there. If they have any issues with it, you know, we'll discuss it and fix it or deny it, but it is a ten-year lease, a ten-year agreement, so I'll get the original to Kim for the record, so one of these days when I'm gone, somebody don't remember, there it is, so. And only lasts for ten years, so. And there'll be a record at the road department too, so. But that worked out very well. Takes a long time working through the government and all that, but we, we finally got a pretty good deal there, I think, for us, so.
Well, that Toyacá High Line Canal, you're getting now where you're gonna be able to siphon out of it into your trucks, and that whole deal opened up.
And it's, it's up and going. Tanner started using the water out of it over the weekend, and he said waters, he's got his water, which it never affected him anyway, you know, unless we're maybe calling, so. And, so Rick was gonna go out today and put an opener on it, and put a hose and test it to see what the pressure is on it, and get ready to start loading out there when we get back down here, so. Because we do want to try to start the mag chloride operation right after the Dolores Norwood Road, which is kind of where I'd like to be, about the middle of April. You know, and not too early and not too late, and catch that at that drier part, so. So that's all gonna start happening in a couple of weeks. Some of the local folks are calling in and wanting to know, and we're telling them, oh, third week in April, we'll be able to start hitting those, those personals, so. The, the twenty shares of water, NVI stock that we own are, we're not using them. If you guys want to, we've been asked to ask you, if you want to lease them, we can, you know, put them on the lease list. And I don't know what that means for paperwork, I'm sure one of you board members will have to sign a piece of paper on it, but if you're willing to do that, nobody's using the twenty shares this year, so.
I'd say absolutely.
There's a lot of people out there, I, I own six shares myself, and they at least mine right out, I mean, within a day.
People take them in a heartbeat, yeah, in a heartbeat.
So if you want to, I'll go ahead and get ahold of Brandon and say, put them on the list.
What would we do? Is that, are those tied, are those NVI shares, are they deeded to the road department? Are they in the road department's name or just the county's name?
Just the county's name.
Yeah, I don't think there's anybody but a board member that's really responsible for them, I think, I understand it, so. We kind of share and talk, but.
We have to decide what we're gonna do with that lease money, where, where that, where that lease money.
What I suggest we do is, I mean, we pay the bill for, for the thing, and just have that offset.
That's what I, that's what I do too, just my assessment fees is all I lease them for.
So if you, I mean, if you.
So it's not costing any on them, yeah.
So it's a wash.
And there seems to be a demand for it, which is, I'm glad we can offer it, you know, for our assessment fees, it's good, and people need the water, so.
I think they kind of got a standard price that it is per chair of lease, right?
Yes.
And if we can get the price of, of what we end up paying, it's a wash, it's a good, and what's a good deal for them and it's a good deal for us.
So I will go ahead and contact the girls out there, or at least Brandon, and tell them they'll put them on the list, so. And then we may have to have one of you sign a piece of paper, lease them out, or whatever you need, and they'll bring it in, so.
Don't sign it unless you get that money.
Checks in the mail don't work.
No, 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 no checks in the mail.
My husband's working on that one.
So there's that. We do have a tree company, Tree Man Services, out working on Road M, taking down some huge old dead cottonwoods leaning out over the road. We've also pinpointed some on Nancy Road over on the east side of four ninety-one. We wanted to look at those. Again, this is some of that work that I put in the budget this year to clean up these old dead trees along the road that had no water no more. And they're dangerous, and the wind blows, and we get lots of calls, but more importantly, I'm afraid one's gonna fall on a car one of these days and really hurt somebody, so. So we're, we've got this program every year, we put so much money into catch these bad spots, and this year with Nancy and Mary we're looking at. We just cleaned a bunch up over Mankas about a month ago, and did a nice job getting those cleaned up, so.
Where are they on the program?
Between twenty-two and twenty-three. I mean, remember, you know that area well, but it's in big ones that hang over the road, the old dead ones there. And so the landowner wants us to cut them back to the tree, which is the best way to do it, which is slightly inside fence line, but at least we don't have these stalks sticking out the fence line, so.
Is it where the dirt fences?
No, no, it's over there, ain't much of a fence there anymore, the trees have fell on it, tore all that, it's just on the south side of the road as you're going west, it'll be on the south side, the big ones that hang over, that big little group there, so. And these are the old ones that grew up with the old open canals, and they're dying, and they're dead, and they're dangerous, you know, so. So that's what we're doing on that. If you guys are going up towards twenty-two and twenty-three, there is that work activity to be aware of, you know, you may have to hold it a little while, but probably be have some signs and flaggers out, so, because they're in the big trees, so. So anyway, that's about it. We did do pretty well at the auction. I don't know the final numbers, but just the vehicles alone, about fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars, so we did have, very pleased to get that. I'm not sure about the other things we had in there, I never did hear what they were, but we'll. Are you kidding me?
The what did?
Almost as much as the pickups did. With an engine. Wow, really? Did you buy any?
Well, were they just the truck beds?
Yeah, just pickup beds. That's good. I'm glad to hear that, yeah, yeah. Had a lot of people interested in them, but they were the eight footers, and they were looking for the short, the shorter beds, you know. Them are real popular now, so, boy, that's great. Had a lot of people interested in them, but they were the eight footers and they were looking for the short, the shorter beds, you know. Them are real popular now, so, boy, that's great. Really? One guy bought them all.
I'll be darned.
Well, I'll tell you, it's, it's funny how it works, cause some days they go for hardly nothing and sometimes they go a lot. It depends on what's out there, you know, so. That's the way it works for me too, but I'm pleased to hear that. So I think overall, we did pretty good this year. You know, I had some people asking me about them. They were pleased that we were taking stuff out of our inventory and putting it back out to the public and let taxpayers have a chance to get it, and, yeah. And they were glad that they liked hearing about us reinvesting it back into better equipment, so. That's some good comments on the whole thing, so it was good, yeah, so. I think that's about it though. I didn't take much of your time, Jay, so. I'm headed up the mountain.
Make sure that job gets done.
Yeah, there we did sleep last night waiting for this.
Have they seen a yelp there? Cause I thought they were hired.
Yelp? No, you know, we went up there last week and where you turn off to go back towards Ormiston on that Salter Wire Road, they were all over that. What do they call that hill there? I don't know. But it just, there must have been two or three hundred heading out just for a mile or two down through the up on the hills there, so. All over that road, you could see their tracks all over that road. So they're there, yeah, so. Just watch one in the mornings and hope we don't hit that, so. It's pretty much daylight by the time we go up the hill, so.
Charlie, if you want, I can tell you about this in the week this week, but I got, you know, last week, Doris County turning about, trying to get us on grounds. So we drafted those, actually, uh, intergovernmental agreement in there. And I was concerned when I saw it. I mean, obviously you haven't signed anything for a reason yet, but I think that it's a little beyond what you said. You want to do, it says that one's in the county rule, making the parking area services, including access road, five or four, the recreation areas, at least currently. Creating initial gravel as needed should be part of the setting, so that's it. Something I said this before that we were okay with doing leave, but I also thought instead of putting the park on, I think that access road is not even what I was suggesting. Are you okay with that, or?
What's Dolores County's?
Dolores County says that they will be responsible for access road and parking area enrollment as needed, general area cleanup needed in season, general site maintenance is needed. But it's once per season, including table and bench maintenance repairs, maybe have the regular trash or the toilet service if you can warrant it. Name if it costs an appropriate service, appropriate toilet service, your cabbages, UVA approved, if the service is available on site, food screen is needed. Maybe we want to go with, it sounds like it's a pure host, but. So, you know, then you was supposed to, it's, it's, you know, I see this for service in Dolores.
So they're talking about the access road as well as the parking area?
Right, that's the only reason I brought it up, cause otherwise I would just say, hey, this looks good, and I just respond to it, so.
Cause that's the main road coming from Bradfield Bridge all the way to the campgrounds.
It's kind of like a split there. It's half of it's Dolores or a part of it's Dolores, part of Monizuma. And then in Monizuma, and so Dolores and I always work together, like reblade something somewhere else. I don't remember where up on, somewhere up in the mountain. And then they take care of that one, cause they're down in there all the time anyway.
Right.
So this is kind of mixing that in agreement, but it's not written agreement. It's just kind of a gentleman's agreement between road superintendent said, you take care of this, I'll take care of that.
So I guess technically what we're gonna say is we'd be responsible for those access roads. This is.
Which is just one road, right?
Yeah.
The main road, twenty-five miles of that road, yeah, I believe, so I think.
See, all that's in Dolores County. That's why the big part of it, yeah, the big part of it.
Then a chunk of it's in Monizuma.
Then just the barely, the campground part's getting Monizuma, so I think, I believe the road maintenance and that to Dolores County. Give us the, you know, I'd, I'd much rather see them, cause they're already doing that road work down there.
They, they, it's, yeah.
Give us the weeds or?
I'm not quite sure. I mean, it's, it's so rare that Steve and I talk about this, that I'm even forgetting now what the agreement was, but. When I first came to work here, we all sat down together and we said, okay, we'll continue doing this while we do that. And I just, a couple of years later, I asked Steve, what was that agreement against? I don't know. I do. Thank you, cause I think Steve and I need to get this all massaged out, because whatever's working is working, but I don't want to give them more work than what we want to agree to with this, you know, or I think we ought to be fair about it.
In my understanding, they're gonna make this happen whether we say we're not doing it or not, so, I mean, we want to do our share.
Yeah. I'll call Steve today or tomorrow and get ahold of him and then I'll email you what we decided and I think we can figure it out easy enough. And I, I'm not opposed to doing the road, cause we go out there several times a year in that area too, taking care of the road into the pit and we have the equipment. Now, if that's my share, then once a year, we'll try to get in there and blade it. So, but it does get rough pretty, pretty much more than once a year. I think Steve hits it a couple of times a year too, so. It is twenty-five miles. It's a, it's a long, it's, it's more than just a half a day's work or a half an hour's work, yeah, so. And the parking lot, I know that the campground is no big deal. I know that campground's just a loop in and I think we kind of turn around here with our equipment anyway, so we just buzz through there now and buzz it and clean it up, so. So it's that twenty-five miles of road that's got me a little bit worried here, so. I'll, I'll, I'll let you know, so. That it?
Okay.
We're all good. All right, going up on the mountain. See you guys. Mr. Furz.
Hello?
Good Will. Morning.
He's here to check out his new dig.
Looking at his new space, yeah. That launches a missile out of that ball there. Watch it. Don't, don't get smart with it.
Believe me, I'm better than that already.
It's a black switch.
Yeah, these are my new digs, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're leaving. We're not gonna be here next week. We're gonna be in our new.
Next week, huh?
We'll be moving this week, but I need to get with you, so, see what we gotta do.
Exciting.
Exciting. I've had to restrain my staff from going over here and examining and marking my thing on it. I'm like, no, no, not yet, not yet.
Putting their name in tape.
Well, thanks for taking time to see me this morning. I have a few prepared remarks and I want to pass out a few things for you guys. An example of what I'm talking about here. And in short, what I'm asking the board of, if I can. What I'll be asking both Monizuma and Dolores Counties to do.
Twenty-five bucks for a new dig?
Good choice of music.
I like them. I like they send them. They're hard.
Would be to, as you guys know, Monizuma and Dolores Counties comprise or make up the twenty-second judicial district. And so if there were to be a ballot question regarding the DA, which is a judicial district position. We would need both Monizuma and Dolores Counties to have identical language on the ballot. And this is a unique situation where it's sort of the only elected official that, that has that kind of arrangement. And this stems from, in nineteen ninety-four, Colorado approved the amendment that set term limits for virtually all elected positions. With certain congressional members being exempt. And, yeah, and the law, yeah, lovely. With the law contains a provision that allows local governments to change that as they see fit and have exemption questions on the ballot. Since that time, fifty-six out of sixty-four counties have removed or extended term limits for one or more of their elected offices, including our county here, which not too long ago extended some terms for, for some elected offices, not all. And about one-third of judicial districts, districts have done this for DAs. And this is for, for good reason, you know. I don't think, on the one hand, believe me, I'm not asking or suggesting that folks who have been in office for a long time should be automatically reelected just because they've been there for a long time. But I believe that it is, is in our community's best interest and the voter's best interest to have the power to reelect those they want to remain in office. You know, if you were a business owner, certainly you wouldn't fire someone just because they've been around for a while. Oftentimes, those are your most valued employees. And so you fire someone because their work product is substandard. And Colorado is the only state that places limits on terms for elected prosecutors. And as a county and as a judicial district, this board has the power to allow our voters to decide if the DA should have the authority to run for a third term. Now, my proposal does not eliminate limits on term, but it does provide for one additional one coming in line with some other offices in this county already. So what I'm asking this board to consider is language like I've included on this initiative. To allow placement of this type of question regarding DA limits on term on the two thousand eighteen ballot. And I'm asking to allow the DA to seek and to serve a third consecutive term. Now, I, I think like many elected offices, the office of the DA is one that benefits from consistency and from experience. The opportunity to seek and serve three terms will help provide the office of the DA with, and their staff, assurances that they can engage in long-term planning. And continuity for programs they're launching or expanding, such as our district-wide grand jury system. Our expanding juvenile and adult diversion programs, pre-trial services, and specialty court programs like DUI and drug court, to name a few. Eight years is a pretty short amount of time. I can tell you that from experience. And in our rural area, the pool of lawyers who are silly enough to want my job are pretty limited. I think this last election was evidence of that. I ran uncontested. Certainly was relieved to see that as I could focus on my work rather than, than that of a candidate. But I think we see a, a special need for this type of term extension. And I think that, you know, we want DAs in this community, this rural community, who want to make Monizuma and Southwest Colorado their home. Not just folks who are spending eight years from Denver, collecting a paycheck and then returning to their place of work or where their family is. DAs, including myself and those who I employ are members of this community. They've made a decision to come and move here and I think that we should promote that kind of stability in our community and our elected officials. So I'm asking again for the opportunity to assist Mr. Baxter, either by virtue of, of this language or, or having a meeting in minds as to what might best be placed on the ballot. But I'm asking that this board authorize the placement of that kind of ballot initiative on the two thousand eighteen ballot.
I think, I think every elected office in this county should be on that ballot. I think, I think you, I think you put a very strong case for why there should be more, why, why term limits are, are, can be very destructive to, to positions that are elected. And I think that holds true. I think we've experienced that through our assessor's office. I think that we had a, a wonderful assessor that was truly at the peak of his game in our assessor's office. And he knew his term limits were coming up and, and he left us a year early and put us in a position where we had to appoint an assessor and, 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 you know, what happened from there. So I, I, I don't disagree with you, Will. I think every election, every, every elected person in this county or in this country, when it comes election time, they can be term limited. They get voted in or they get voted out. If you're not doing the job that you were put in there to do, the electorate can vote you out at every election. You've got a term limit at every, every election cycle. This, this arbitrary imposition of lengths of time that you're allowed to ser- serve in any capacity, I think, is an arbitrary and capricious way to limit. To try and guard yourself again, against getting the wrong people into an elected position. I mean, you can't do that. If you pay attention to your electoral process, you can vote them in and vote them out at every election. And so I, I, I support this and I would support that every elected position in Monizuma County be on the ballot to be, term limits be dropped on all of them.
So drop as opposed to increase to three?
Right, drop all, drop all term limits. Drop all term limits for every, every elected position in this, in this county.
I'd have to research that. I don't know. My guess, I know for commissioners you can do that. I haven't looked at anything else. You know, I don't know, do DAs that even?
Yes, there are a few districts where the DA has been, the limits have been removed completely. And I, I think that Dolores County is an example of, of a place where many of their elected officials also don't have term limits. I mean, again, that's an even smaller, more rural community than, than Monizuma and, and maybe that was the best thing for them.
Dolores County, I, I thought that they had dropped term limits all over.
I think they have. The DA would be an exception to that, because the DA position would require a joint initiative from both counties. And so I don't think that that applies the DA there, because we're, this is a unique judicial district.
Intertwined together and they couldn't make a ruling for our county is.
But, but Sheriff Martin, you know, as an example, their, their commissioners, et cetera, so they, that's one example of how they've dropped them completely. And we, we recently had, I want to say ten years ago, there were some officials. There were questions on the ballot as to each office, you know, treasurer, assessor. There were a number of offices that were extended then to three. And the DA was not on that ballot and what I thought might be best for, for those who, who want to see that happen to other elected offices. And I agree with you, Keenan, is, is to maybe have separate questions for each office versus a, a kind of all your eggs in one basket question. And I've seen that, the reason I, I say that is because I've seen measures come and go, largely fail in other districts and counties when you group a lot of folks together.
So who was grouped on the last one?
I don't know if it was grouped, and I didn't bring that, that language, but.
So the first time it was presented to the people, it was grouped all together and it failed. And then the next year, we, we called the people again and the treasurer and the assessor and all those passed to go forward to a three-term limit. But the commissioners, the commissioners were known as a state and the district attorney was not.
So it was exactly three, except for the MCC and DA, so it's.
Coroner doesn't have any term limits, does it?
How much does it cost to put it on the, the ballot?
It would be depending on what other questions are included within the ballot, because what we do is we take the total cost of the election and divide it amongst all the entities that have questions on the ballot.
So. I hope our surveyor doesn't have term limits too.
I don't think.
No, I don't think he does.
So do we know how many questions are on the ballot now? Just to kind of get an estimate of what it would cost?
I, I don't know specifically, but I heard rumors of at least two possibly three.
If there was three, then, if there was four, would there, could there be a rough estimate of what it would cost for the question?
That would be two different or three different entities and so a third of it would probably be, you know, depending on the election, probably ten, fifteen thousand. And that's just a rough estimate.
And that's far less than, than at a time when we don't have an election going on. Like Dolores County, for example, doesn't always have an election going on. This is an election year for both counties and so it might be a uniquely good time.
It would be less expensive this year than to try and do it in a, in a different year.
Can you find an answer to that?
Well, I'd ask you the same thing. I will turn that question to you, sir. Short answer is, sure, no. Certainly, the cost is something I'm, I'm aware of, but again, recognizing, this is why, you know, again, an election year like this is better than, than a hot year. Hence the timing.
Depending on if they're a state testing, the state offices or university, the questions that they have on the ballot as well. And that's like seventy cents per voter, no matter what the cost of the ballot.
That'll help defray it down even more.
I'd have to think about this a little bit, Will.
Sure.
You know, the deal for me is, is I, I really wish our congressmen and our senators were term limited. I, they, I tell you what. Some of them, man, they're way too long, in my opinion. I go up there and worship VC and seems like the ones that are there the longest, have less time to speak with you. Seems like the issues aren't important, is important to them. This is fully different than that, I know.
Yeah, that's why I went with three. I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I think, from my perspective. I'm, I'm not, you know, I, I think, from my perspective, Keenan's comments are well taken, and frankly, I have to be realistic as well about what the voters want, you know. And I, and I do think that many voters share your concern with term limits, and that's why the question, instead of eliminating them, I, I'm asking that they be one more, eight to twelve. And, and we're seeing that again. It puts the DA in line with the sheriff, with other elected officials who have already been given three terms. And so I'm not seeking radical change, just a little bit more of continuity, again, for, for the DA's offices sake, as well as I think stakeholders that are involved in public safety and criminal justice.
When do we need to know? When do we have that?
I don't have my calendar yet, but I think I gave you a date, you know.
I think much of what's on the calendar is for state.
End of July is what I think.
That sounds probably right.
Yeah.
I think that's correct. I mean, that's if I recall right. That sounds about right.
It sounds very correct, but I don't have my calendar. I mean, we start carrying that with me.
Sure.
So we have at least a couple months.
I have not yet met with Dolores County. I'd be asking to agendize the same issue with them in the near future. And because of the kind of joint efforts required, I'm hoping we wouldn't wait until July, but I certainly respect and understand your need to take some time with this.
We'd like to definitely hear what Dolores County's take on this.
Sure. Sure. I'll get with their folks and, and let you know when I'm on the agenda and see what happens after that. I'll be doing that as soon as possible. And I don't know if it'd be appropriate to, to put me back on the agenda to, to have a vote, maybe, or, or if I just wait for you guys to let me know.
How do you feel about Commissioner Lever?
I'm for, for term limits, but I don't have a problem with the three-term in this situation.
I think you know how I feel. I, I think, I think term limits are, they never take the place of an apathetic voting populace. And that's why we've got in this country is an apathetic voting population. Term limits are never gonna, never gonna correct that.
I'm certainly with you. Some congressmen and senators I sure would like to see it applied to.
Well, I just seen it firsthand. The ones that have been there for a short amount of time, when you call and you want to go in their, their office and you tell them what the problem you got in Montezuma County, two thousand miles away, they just, it seemed like they didn't care more.
I understand.
The ones that have been there for thirty years, they're just like, well, you know, I've been around this corner a few times and...
They shouldn't be there thirty years. I support what you're after, Will.
I'll leave it to you, I, you know, I'll leave it to you if you guys want to allow me the opportunity to have a vote today, and then I can go ahead and move forward with Dolores County or...
Commissioner, I think you have some reservations about it. Don't Commissioner sit with it?
Well, the issue is whether or not that you want to vote on extending it to three or whether you want to consider throwing the commissioner in there as well.
No, no, I don't.
Or what you want to consider getting rid of term limits.
Yeah, that's, that's up to these gentlemen to go that far. I'd be in support of what you're asking for your, for yourself.
Thank you.
I, I would only be willing to deal with this.
Sure.
You want to be president? I actually would like what you said about throwing them all in there at once, but that's why I would like to think about this a little bit.
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah.
I, I would just note that I'm the only one who doesn't already have three. And in you, with you gentlemen as well, and the commissioners. So I think to do that, if, if, if there's reservations about getting rid of, getting rid, getting rid of limits altogether, then that's obviously a reservation, that's, that's well taken. But the DA question, I believe because it's a unique position between two counties, thereby, in my opinion, requiring a separate question, because I have to have the language identical as what Dolores County has. And so I think a, a separate and, and equally valid discussion that could be happening after you consider this question is to decide whether or not you want to put it to the voters to have limits removed on all other county officials. I, I don't think, from my perspective, that the voters are gonna go that way, with my position particularly. I, I think that they might have reservations about that. And so personally, I believe that a, a more successful approach for, for DA might be to just be consistent with other county officials who have similar limits on term, being three. And again, because I need to have the same question between two counties, I'm, I'm respectfully asking that we consider this in a vacuum from the other county positions and then take up the matter as, as a separate item when discussing whether or not alterations should be made for other elected officials.
I would really like to hear what Dolores County has to say first.
Okay.
I'd probably want to improve the language a little bit if I could do this, but...
Okay.
It's a significant change.
Sure. Well, I'm happy to do that with you, John. I'm wondering if, if we could, in theory, have a, have a vote where you generally agreed that the DA questioned limit extension, limit, term limits to three terms could be something that John and I could hash out in conjunction with Dolores County, and then take a final vote on that later, but, or however you guys want to do it.
Will, are you gonna get on there, are they up next week?
I haven't talked to Dennis over there yet. I, I imagine I can get on there pretty quick, but I, I again, don't know. And noting their inherent removal of limits already, I, I don't foresee a problem. And so then again, I don't want to make assumptions, but I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that they'll, they'll vote in favor of putting this kind of, this kind of question on the ballot.
You're kind of in a struggle already. Yeah, let's, let's not make a decision right now.
Okay.
I mean, you've heard, it's gonna pass. That's likely the only thing to answer.
Okay. I, I, yeah. I'll defer to you if we wanted to set up a meeting where I come back, or if I should just let you know after I get from Dolores County.
We'll just come back?
Let's see, let's see what they come up with, and then you and John look out, and Dennis, whatever you need to do to affect the language, and then come, uh...
Sure.
Bring that particular proposal to...
Perfect. I will do that. Great. John, you mind if we correspond? I'll send you a copy of this, and then we can...
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
We can hash out what you think's better.
Yeah, after you're done, I might jump out. Don't talk to you just because I got an email this morning that...
Okay. Perfect. All right. Can I ask you any other questions for you?
I'm good.
Okay. Well, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a great day. See you guys soon.
See you, Will.
Move it ahead, but Tanner's here, so I'll jump to the fairground.
How was golf?
Good, Tanner, how's it sound? Man, how you holding up?
Oh, it's busy.
Had a couple of good running weeks out there, haven't you?
Yeah.
And another one coming.
Yeah, this weekend. It's going blow, that's for sure.
Well, you've had good weather for it.
Yeah.
Been, been, been good to manage, then, haven't you?
Yeah. Yeah, it's been busy. And only getting busier from here on out, so that's good.
Yeah.
Um, speaking of busy, so, so the stuff I sent you was for actually last Monday, and I didn't go in and update it for this Monday, there was a scheduling conflict, so I apologize for that. But, I mean, all the statistics are pretty much the same, so. Had my hands full last week getting ready to set up for the stuff, so. So Fairgrounds income to date, so like I said, this was based off the first of April, seventeen thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars. And 2017, at the same timeframe, we're at fifteen thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents, so slightly up. So that's a good thing. Now, not figured in this is the bill for the Ag Expo. Their bill's right around sixty-four hundred, and also the bill for the Home and Garden Show, which just got over Saturday, so...
Got some pretty good ticket items that show up.
Yeah, that'll jump up roughly ten thousand dollars right there, so. And I'll explain kind of the reasoning on the Ag Expo deal here towards the bottom. Fairgrounds attendance to date, once again, these numbers are, are before, thirteen thousand, four hundred seventy-three people, and then in 2017, we're at twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven, so we're about a thousand people up off the estimate, so. The fifteenth through the seventeenth, we had the Ag Expo. Everything went well with it, didn't have any problems, no blowups or anything, and everything went good power-wise and facility-wise, so. The twenty-fourth, we had a Sheriff Water 101 meeting out there, everything went well with it. The twenty-sixth through the thirtieth was the week after the Ag Expo, the sheriff's office had their physical agility course out there. Everything went well with it. This last weekend, Four Corners Home and Garden Show on Friday and Saturday, they had, they had a pretty good turnout there. I haven't heard numbers back yet from them, but I would say it's very, very close to what they were last year. Pretty good turnout. A lot of new vendors, they had thirty-five new vendors there, so, so that was a plus.
Yeah.
A new gal running it, and she did a, did a real good job with it. This coming weekend, we have the Cortez Gun Show on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The twenty-first, we have a commodities giveaway. The twenty-eighth is a tomahawk team roping. Those guys that have been doing the roping through the winter, they're gonna use the outdoor arena, weather pending on that. And let me touch on that a little bit, too. So in the outdoor arena, we, when the Ute Rodeo bought the bucking chutes, they became the wrong colors, so they gave us a new roping chute, and then we bought an add-on chute behind it. So we're in the process right now of installing that because we raised the level of the, the sand in the arena, about three and a half, four inches, we have to raise that up. So where the old roping chute was, there's got a concrete pad there, so we're gonna go in, we'll do the work ourselves, and we're gonna form that up and build it up to set the new chute on level ground going forward, actually have it just a little bit higher for the sand to build up.
Because weren't you gonna reconfigure that gate down there at that, at that end on that?
Yeah, before, yeah, we'll do that before the rodeo. Originally, they were wanting to pull the stands down, move the chain link fence in, and then center the gate. I, I think they would have, I think we all would have regretted doing that. The Ute Rodeo's growing so much that, you know, we don't want to limit our space there.
Yeah.
But the problem they have is where the, the header box is, where they run their ropes off that corner post to the chute for their barrier, that, that's just a post sitting up. There's no H brace or any, you know, per se tied into that. So what we're gonna do is come off that post about five foot with an H to sturdy that up, move the gate down five foot, actually make the gate about a foot wider so it's easier for us to get our panels in and out, and just shove everything down five foot. So it, it should work real well.
Good.
But we are in the process of that. We have the new chute sitting there, we just, like I say, just have to raise the elevation, do some concrete work for that pattern, so, and we'll do all that ourselves. The second and third of May, we have the C dot Truck Rodeo, gonna be there. The fifth, the commodities giveaway. The sixth, the four-H livestock tag unit. The eighth is a barrel race in the indoor arena. We have kind of a different deal to where, yeah, the eighth is when it starts. They're gonna do some barrel races on Tuesday nights, try it out rather than a weekend deal. So, so they'll have one the eighth, or the, the eighth, and then also the twelfth, or the twelfth, I'm sorry, is the twelve hours of Mesa Verde Bike Race. And then the following Tuesday, the fifteenth, will be another Tuesday night barrel race in the indoor arena. The eighteenth and nineteenth, the car race season kicks off. I did get the contract signed, deposits paid on that, so that's all good to go forward on. The twentieth, we have another barrel race in the outdoor arena. The twenty-sixth, I have a question mark on the monster truck deal. I've talked to them, gave them dates, but we have not gotten any confirmation back from them or anything, so I don't know how serious they are, but I'm still gonna press them. The thirty-first, the Jordan World Circus, they actually called and scheduled back, so it's actually the thirtieth, since I've sent this out, they moved back a day.
Is that indoor or outdoor?
They're gonna, they're gonna have it set up for the outdoor, and if the weather looks bad, they will move it into the indoor.
So to, in the arena, not, not at the racetrack?
Yeah, the outdoor arena. Yeah, and they had it there last year, and, and if they do it in the outdoor arena, they have such a greater seating capacity that they only do one show. If they do it in the indoor arena, they do two shows to try to capture their, their revenue off it, so. And then the sixth is the Back Country Tax Sale, which has grown to be a, it's a new, I think this is the third year they've had it there, and it's growing more and more every year. And then the sixth through the tenth is the Ute Rodeo and Carnival. That's kind of where we're at schedule-wise on events. I added some things in here. Stall grants, so I was going to apply for a DOLA grant for the stalls. I showed you, and I think, did you get that email?
I did.
Yeah. So I, I visited with the new DOLA guy, Patrick Rodinelli. Yeah. He, he took that project idea, bounced it off all of his peers, and said, you're, you're not gonna have a shot at it this year.
You know, we're missing on both of those. We can't get those portable watch with those.
I, I pitched him on the restroom idea, the restroom and the kitchen. He said, yeah. He said that, that would be, he said, right now we label it an A, B, C category, and we're so short on grant funding and have so many people applying for grants, that this would be definitely, the stalls would be a C deal. He said, I'm just trying to save you all the work of going through and writing the grant.
Yeah.
He said, that's not what they're looking for.
With the kitchen and restroom remodels and...
The kitchen and restroom, he said, yeah. He said, that's a, a good project that we would have a very good chance on. And that's I'm looking at in the fall, more than anything just time-wise for me to do it.
What about GOCO, Laurie?
GOCO, I've talked to them last year on the stall idea, and they said the same thing. They're more park and rec structures type of thing, but on stalls, they don't want to, have no interest in them. So I'm, I'm just kind of looking at different options we have. This is a company, I haven't got the revised bid from them, but this is a company called Triton Barns. We can get these stalls, the fronts and the sides and the backs are all the same price, so you run, you run the stalls back-to-back, so you share common panels on your sides and your, and your backs. They're three hundred ninety-five dollars per panel, whether it's a front or a back, if they're made in China. If they're made in the United States, two hundred dollars more per panel. And if we order them, and I'm just throwing ideas out here right now, obviously we haven't ordered these, um, if you order them through China, they come in a container, and they ship the container directly to us, and then we unload the container, so it's freight-free. If we have them, build them at their factory, we're looking at twenty-two to twenty-five hundred dollars extra freight to deliver it to us.
And then you get the container?
No, we don't get the container. Yeah, they, they, they take the container off. I asked them that. We do get the metal racks that the panels come on. He said they're a pain in the butt to unload out of a container. You pretty much need a loading dock, but I think there's enough loading docks around here. If we decide to go this route, then we can, we can figure a way to unload them. So they've cheapened up about five dollars a panel from the last quote I got from them last November. But I'm just, just wanting to show you what we're doing, what we're looking at option-wise. Like I said, the, the, one of the bigger needs, number one, all the high-end shows that I've been trying to get, like the cuttings and, and the big horse shows, that's the one thing they're...
They require that.
They require, whether I agree or disagree with it or think it's silly, that's what, they don't want to put a, a high-dollar horse in a regular prowl panel stall.
Through a high...
Or, or, you know, pass-on illness next to them and stuff, so. I called Prefort, who is a huge American company, they do great products. I think they're gonna be quite a bit more expensive, but I did call them, and I haven't got the quote back from them yet. They had a, a line on some discounted twelve-foot stalls, these are all ten-foot stalls, some discounted twelve-foot stalls that were supposed to go to Florida, but they refused them because they were the wrong color, they were black, which, black works for us. So I'm gonna see what kind of a deal we can get on those, but I just wanted to show you kind of what we're, we're looking at. I don't know where we're at on Conservation Trust Fund money, even if it's something we're able to swing this year, but this is something that, that we're gonna have to address eventually down the road.
How many would one container hold?
Uh, the minimum I can get is fifty stalls. So on that...
Fifty times three ninety-five is nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, well, that's fifty stalls, so then it's more panels than...
Oh, you gotta do four panels to a stall, don't you?
Yeah. So I came up with a rough estimate, like I said, this is just going off their previous quote and changing the numbers of, for fifty stalls, it would be fifty-four thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars, just so we have something to go off of. Like I said, I'll wait and see what Prefort does, and I'm still gonna continue to try to find other solutions, but the big thing is the high school rodeo. Like I said, last year, we've never had over a hundred and fifty horses stalled, they showed up with two forty, and we didn't have enough packs. So I figure rather than buy more panels, we might as well upgrade to something that'll, yeah, try to attract more business.
Well, and then you rent them out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Over time.
And then what we do on our stalls is, is fifty... And then what we do on our stalls is is fifteen dollars per horse per night, we have overnighters basically every night that come in and. That rent them, and then for our events, Virginia rodeos, rodeos and such. Um, or I do give the producer the option if they wanna rent the building and then pay the one-time panel charge, and then they collect the stall fees. To help entice them to to bring in more business, same money either way for us, so.
Well, they're gonna pay themselves back eventually, I mean, they're they're gonna pay themselves back, so.
So, just so you know, that that's one thing we're we're looking at and exploring on right now, um.
How many, how many do you want, how many do you want ideally, if you had your choice, how many of those do you want?
Originally, I was looking at. Thirty-six. And and the reason for that is in our barns, our barns are roughly fifty by a hundred, and I could run. One stretch in there back-to-back of eighteen pins, and then have one row of our regular panel pins in there. And still have nine-foot walkways on both sides, if our barns were a little wider, we'd get, you know, four rows in there, yeah, two runs. But if we do that, we'd only have a three-foot walkway, and and that's not gonna be a safe deal, so that's how I'm trying to, you know, figure the numbers up. The fifty is the minimum that he would do to ship from China, so then obviously, we would just do another run of them somewhere else.
You would use them?
Yeah, oh yeah, and we we would charge probably a a little bit more on these, you know, twenty dollars a night type of thing, you know, adjust their fee schedule, so. Just like I said, don't wanna make a decision on that right now, just so you guys know, that's one thing we're looking at. I think we're gonna eventually down the road, and I think it's gonna help us to entice more business, like I say, I've been trying to work on these cutting shows. To come in and and that's the number one thing, is they will not, you know, stall those high-dollar horses in there.
You know what you're dealing with.
Do they bring the container back, they come get it?
Yeah, they, uh, yeah, they'll they'll deliver it back to California, is how he explained it to me. The container, cause that's why I figured, well, shoot, if we can get the container out of there. So then a- another issue, uh, last Monday, uh, we had a break-in at the fairgrounds. Not fairgrounds, but the gentlemen that are working on the flume down there, we've allowed them to set up over at the racetrack. Uh, so Monday morning, between one in the morning and three in the morning, somebody came in, they cut our chain to get in there. They went in to where their stuff was, um, luckily, they have a forty-yard container there with all their stuff, luckily, they had their telehandler parked in front of it. So they couldn't get it open. They have another cargo trailer there, they cut the lock off of it, they stole a demo saw, a chainsaw, a bunch of hand tools, I haven't got the final list. Um, I just talked to James before the meeting, he said it was around four thousand dollars worth of stuff. Um, and they stripped all the running lights off the cargo trailer. Why somebody would take the time to do that, I have no idea, but that's what they did. Uh, we went through all of our surveillance, there's been a sheriff report, uh, filed and everything. Our surveillance, we can see the vehicle coming in, they're shining the lights, so, you know, can't make out much, and then when they left, they're on the brake lights, we couldn't. We we've got a description of the vehicle, we know it's an S U V, we know the direction, yeah, but no license plate or anything. Um, I've since bought some trail cameras, I've put some trail cameras up to try to get a better, better closer image, um, I don't think they're gonna be dumb enough to come back, but. It doesn't hurt to have those up anyways out there. So, just so you know.
They think it was an inside jump, somebody knowing what was down there, I mean.
I don't think so.
It's an odd place for somebody to even.
But you you can see it, yes, you can see it from the pull-out, from the pull-out, you could really, you can really see it well. There's been a lot of break-ins, it sounds like from this same description of a vehicle, from a lot of people I've talked about or talked to. Uh, Shooter's World got broke into in the back, the garage there, um, I heard, uh, the the car lot down there got broke into. Don Janz, who was on the fairboard, his place was broke into with the same vehicle description, so, um, I think it's the same people. The sheriff's office is is working on that, uh, another thing, sorry, I have a lot to go over, um.
On the, um. The Conservation Trust, right now, we've got two hundred and seventy thousand in there, and in a. In the budget, we've got about ninety-three, ninety-five thousand, that covers half, half of their salaries, you know, but then we get about thirty. Thirty thousand, thirty-three thousand a quarter, um, through those lottery funds, so I mean, and and as we're looking at what he needs and this and that. If there's certain projects that fit a certain grant, or. Um, we can always use this as a match, or in this case of the stalls, I mean, if if no one seems to think that that's a grant thing, well, I mean, we can use the Conservation Trust for it.
And that's what they, both those entities kept telling me, we'll use Conservation Trust money for it, that's what it's there for, so. But I need to, I'll get with Melissa and we'll sit down and and make sure to project out, so we know we have enough for matching money out of conservation for like the the kitchen and restroom. Idea and all that kinda stuff, so.
I've been to multiple, uh, fairgrounds throughout the state, and we have got one of the nicest facilities, but what we lack is.
Is those, those stalls, absolutely.
And that kitchen and bathroom, I mean, you you're on the right track, that remodel of that's well, well past.
And and I'll be honest, I haven't even ventured into getting quotes, Renee, we're so slammed right now, but, like I said, that'll be a fall project, because it's gonna. Have to be done during the winter months because of our schedule.
One of the things that they have too is the timing of that DOLA grant is, um. And then you get notified in November or something like that, so. You might not, I mean, kinda the sooner the better, if possible.
But you're ki- you're gonna combine the ki- kitchen and the.
Yeah, that's that's what I told him, yeah, yeah, when I talked to him, and and he thought we'd have a a pretty good chance at that that grant, so.
But the other thing that we have too is we have matching funds, if the Conservation Trust, um, the capital funds, you know. For matching on that, it's not necessarily your operating funds out of the general fund, so, we have a couple of options for matching, matching funds on that.
Also on another deal, I, uh, right now, we're paying two hundred and ninety-five dollars a month for two six-yard dumpsters out there to waste management. They get dumped twice a week, majority of the time, they're not full, sometimes they're over full, you know, just depends on what, yeah, what events we have going on, most big events. I require them to bring in a dumpster, but, you know, a lot of times, those dumpsters get full, so we use ours. Uh, I visited with Shelby Rowe, who does the high school rodeo out there, who has the new trash service. Uh, I got a quote from him, I pitched him two different ideas, number one, just for a flat replacement, what what are you gonna charge us? Number two, how much will you charge us if I allow you to have exclusive marketing rights on all of our trash cans out there? You know, eighty to a hundred barrels and trash cans out there, you put your sticker on them, your logo on them, whatever you want. I made sure to let him know there are no guarantees that, you know, say, Home and Garden Show brings in Waste Management or another company, we have nothing to do with that. But on our cans, you would have the exclusive rights to market, just trying to save us a little bit of money. So he did, uh, pitch us back for just replacement, as to what we have now, he would do it for two forty a month. Um, or if, uh, advertising on our barrels would be two twenty a month.
And how much is it currently?
Two ninety-four.
Isn't there one more, isn't there Countrywide?
I talked to him this weekend, he was out there, and, uh, he does not currently have six-yard dumpsters. All he would be able to do are like the little three-yard dumpsters, which is what he had out there for the Home and Garden Show, and about ten bags in there full. Um, it just, I don't think he would keep up with the demand.
This one here, though, if you did the advertising, how long of a contract would that be?
He he wanted it for a year, for a year, yeah, he wanted to do a year contract with us, um, you know, he'd only obviously have the exclusive rights. On marketing on our stuff for a year, um, so, I mean, the.
That'd save you seventy, seventy bucks a month, right?
Eight hundred, uh, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year, if we go with the marketing at two twenty a month, that's what it would save us out of our budget for trash service.
Do you have any, any marketing on barrels now?
Nope, they're just the regular old plastic deals, or the fifty-five gallon barrels outside, so.
Did Waste Management, were they interested?
I, you know, I did not contact Waste Management, every time I called in, you're talking to somebody in Arizona.
That'd save you eight hundred bucks a month and.
A hundred a year.
So, yeah, but I did talk to, like I say, Countryside this this weekend and and asked him, he said, you know, all he has are those little ones, and, um, he's not set up for the big ones. He's hoping down the road to do it, so this might be something that every year, we go ahead and and do an annual bid out on it and see where we can get the best deal on, so. Yeah, I just wanted to give, give them the opportunity, being local for sure, so. Okay, we'll move forward with that, um. Another deal, uh, Tuffy Security Products, um, down south of town, they were bought out by a larger. National corporation, um, and they, uh, their marketing director, Chip Olson. Contacted me, actually sent me an email a couple of weeks ago, that they're wanting to have a much larger presence in the community. So they want to, I might've already told you guys this, they want to, uh, sponsor every event we have out there at the fairgrounds. And also maybe sponsor the fairgrounds, I met with him, I I typed up a two-page list of our. Our staple events, you know, I don't wanna, and and local community events, um, you know, not picking on the circus by any means, but they just run through here, they're a one-day event, you know.
They take all the money right out of here.
Exactly, so I'm focusing more on the community events that are here every year, so I I gave him all that information, I. Got a chance to sit down and meet and visit with him on Friday, uh, I told him, you know, by no means am I against you. Sponsoring something at the fairgrounds, but I'd much rather have you sponsor our customers, because it prolongs our business at the fairgrounds. And and helps the health of our customers, um, he sounds very excited about it, really wanting to to make a big pitch on that, so. Pretty rare that you have somebody come and and wanna do all that to your customers, so.
We'll see what he proposes.
Yeah, hopefully, that's gonna be a be a great partnership moving forward with all of our customers, um. And then the other thing, just so you know, I know, uh, Ute rodeo was gonna come in and propose for the alcohol at the ranch rodeo. They missed the deadline by, I think, six days, um, on our ninety-day period, um, and that's something that. Was set up by the commissioners years ago, and I've just left the sand, so I got to to questioning, well, do we need to look at and change that ninety-day period to a sixty-day or? You know, what do we need to do, what's gonna work best for the clerk's office, for for everybody, so Melissa, I, and Kim, and the. The people she has down there that that do the alcohol permitting, we met last week and went over everything, just to make sure we're all on the same page, make sure. You know, the the timelines jibe with everybody, and the the consensus when we left that was, the ninety days is is the substantial one for everybody to. Get all their ducks in a row on everything, so. Just, you know, I I think it was time to review that policy.
Who was it that screwed up on the, that missed it in like, like six days?
I talked to him during the Ag Expo and 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 let him know, you know, hey, if you guys are gonna do it, you need to. Get the ball rolling, and they actually changed the date of the ranch rodeo, they moved it back a week, so that would've helped them, but still, they they missed the timeline on it. It's up to you guys, I mean, the ninety days is a commissioner rule, it's not a state rule, it's not anything, um, other than a than a commissioner rule, so it's up to you guys. Whether you wanted to make an exception there or not, that's that's your call, but, um, I did think it was smart and. And Kim's office is gonna go in and and do a kind of a flow chart, so it'll be easier for any of these new organizations that come in. They'll, it'll be easier for them to see the steps they need to take, exactly, so there's no confusion or no. That's pretty much everything.
And it does seem that, you know, for us. We, in our discussions back and forth about how long it should take, you know, and some of the requirements that they have. Lynn and Melinda have to deal with, you know, all the pieces that that goes. You know, and sixty days is is would be ching, 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 you gotta have everything. So the ninety days gives them just a little bit of leeway on that timeframe, uh, in case they get busy. Cause a lot of times, these events are run by people who aren't, that isn't their job, you know. They're volunteers and doing different kinds of things, but, you know, to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row, so. We were all kinda well swayed here, swayed there, you know.
But they should've known, they do this every year.
Yeah, it's the third time, yeah, the first time they applied for it, they got everything in order, and then they never followed through with it. Um, never got the the sheriff's office out there and the policy to do security, never followed through with their permit, um, just pretty much dropped the ball on it. Last year, they did it, um, and served alcohol, never had any problems, and then, so this would be the third year, so.
So part of it too is making sure that they have all the stuff, that they know that they have to have security, that they know that they have all these different things, and so it's not just something that you say, oh. Next Friday, I wanna have, I wanna, well, we were gonna have the Melissa Bruner party fun, and I don't. It won't work, cause I don't have the right stuff, and I need to have a lot more time, so.
Well, I I think we should change the ninety, however, I do think the government should work to the ching, 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 because all the private enterprise has to, and they go out of business. They can do it, I can't leave it.
Yeah, they, they know they have to jump through all those hoops and.
So y- you are for keeping it ninety days, or you wanna change it? Yeah, and that's my thought, you know, so. And that's all I had, unless you guys have anything else, any complaints or issues.
Glad you're getting water out there.
Yeah, yeah, that's nothing, yeah, we have water. Yeah, we started getting water on Friday, actually, so. Yeah, so now we get to clean the pump out several times a day till we get all the trash out of there. Yeah, but we got water.
How about your, um, the Home and Garden Show, how how did it?
Good, good, like I said, they, uh, had thirty-five new vendors, um, everything went well, I think, uh. No problems, no complaints.
That's an awful lot of new vendors, whoever whoever promoted that must've really gone out and got.
Her name's Jenna, and I don't I don't know her last name much, should, but, um, yeah, she did a good job, did a good job, and. I think there's a lot of things going on in the community, the auction and other things, I think. Yeah, it went good, went good, like I said, now we're setting up for the gun show, so.
So that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday evening, five to nine. Sound good?
Good job, Dana.
All right, thank you.
I'm just reading an email right here, um, McP boat ramp to open on Saturday, so news release from the Corps Service, so. Just thought I would stake that out loud.
It's coming Saturday.
Yes, we're ready for the sheriff.
Good morning, how are ya? You start snoring, you can throw me out. I'll just bring you up to date with, uh, inmate numbers, um, it's like the highest ones were this month. April the second, we had a hundred and two, we're down today to, uh, eighty-four, so. I don't know what happened right after April Fool's Day. I don't know. I don't know what that was about. For the month of March. Now, these are totals for, uh, daily. Inmate housings. For, uh, state prisoners, we had a total there, as you can see, a hundred and sixty, those are. State charges, those are not reimbursable funds. Municipal is actually Cortez. It needs to be changed, so you have a better idea that it's Cortez, City of Cortez, they had a total of twenty-nine. Uh, in the month of March. Uh, Dolores County, uh, there were two. And of course, none in Mankas or Dolores, so we had twenty-four courtesy holds. And we had two hundred and fifteen total, uh, throughout the month of March. Uh, daily breakdown of prisoners that came into the facility, but, and remember, this will also include the daily. When they're there for twenty-four hours, uh, or longer, uh, those that are not there. Uh, that long, there's no daily charge, cause they're in and out, they're they're bonding or actually going through pre-trial. So we had, uh, total of two thousand four hundred and thirty-two on state charges. Brings us down to a total of, uh, twenty-seven hundred that came in and out of our facility. Uh, the detention center in the month of March.
Do you get paid for a courtesy hold, or is that?
No, cause we, it's a trade-off, we we, I mean, our 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 courtesy holds are about the same throughout the state. And it's just, and they're not there that long, um, they're just dropping off to, you know, so they can either. Um, you know, get a meal or 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 whatever the case, and then they're they're gone again, so. The next page there will show you what the, uh, reimbursement costs were from the City of Cortez month of March. Uh, hun- hundred and forty-eight, uh, day holds, uh, for the City of Cortez, eight thousand forty-nine. Uh, Department of Corrections had twenty-two inmate holds, uh, prisoner, state prisoners. Uh, that's almost twelve hundred dollars. And, uh, for parole, DOC, uh, seven thousand seventy, you can see that DOC holds are always, um. Uh, questionable, but the parole holds, they come in, they're there for two, three, four, five days, and then they're out. And then they're back in, and then they're out, and then they're back in, so it's like, it's just, I wish that, um. And this is all, like I explained several months ago, uh, this is what the state seems to do. Uh, to, uh, keep their prison inmate counts down and closing prisons. uh, to, uh, keep their prison inmate counts down and closing prisons. It dumps it onto the counties, yeah, and every county, um, jail is, is experiencing these things. That's why we went to the legislators and, and to the judicial committee and we, we testified to our inmate costs and what, what these costs were coming.
Have you heard, Steve, what's happened to that bill to get that up to a hundred and eight bucks?
I think that it went through at least one committee, but I don't know where it's at, and we should be getting something before, um, June, I would think. Uh, because that's when the law will probably change, is July one, generally, but we'll see. Dolores County, uh, we had, uh, forty-five days there for Dolores County. It was charged, uh, twenty-four, forty-seven. And nothing for the town of Manches or, um, the town of Dolores. Uh, let's see. Uh, the total sheriff's fees, uh, down at the bottom there that were collected, paid into the general fund was thirty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight, thirty-nine. So that was the total amount of fees that were gathered just for the month of March. Jail operational expenses, again, looking at those, how many inmates per day? It all comes out to the same. You can see that for, um, state charges where they're non-reimbursable, uh, we always end up with the, with the highest. Um, and it'll always be that way unfortunately, uh, unless there's, there's some change where the state, uh, actually charges, you know, or allows for reimbursement of those. Uh, I, I don't see that changing at all. Dolores County, uh, doesn't show a figure there, that's because it didn't come in yet at the time that, uh, this report was generated, so. But they had that many inmates, forty-five. Should be about the same as, uh, the DOC prisoners there, twenty-four, forty-seven. That's what will, it could've already come in, but it didn't come in at the time this report was generated. Questions about inmates. Programs are going good. It's helping reduce. Uh, it's still going forward, even though we still haven't got, um, that funding yet from the, uh, from the feds to pay their portion of the JAG assistance grants for the, uh, detention education program. Um, so I'm not sure exactly where that lawsuit is at in Chicago. Uh, it's affecting every, every law enforcement agency that's put in for those grants. They still haven't kicked it out. It all has to do with, um, the sanctuary cities fight, so, I don't know. Up to, uh, the Attorney General. I just, I wonder if he's gonna cut funds loose, you know. We had, uh, just so you know, we had an inmate, um, last night that was transported to the hospital, suffered a stroke. It was caught there, uh, by the detention officers, uh, on their, uh, their constant checks on inmates. Um, person was, uh, looks like fifty-nine years old. He was in for, at DUI arrest on, uh, April the third. And, uh, he was transported to San Juan Regional Hospital after, uh, he was taken to Southwest Memorial here. Um, he was released on a PR bond by Judge Blue, uh, so we could cut that loose. Uh, he did clear medical release, um, from the jail and was visited by our, our staff nurse. Uh, he did, did have some high blood pressure problems apparently, so. We also have a female that's, uh, in, that, uh, is pregnant, that's in the hospital now. Um, I'm not sure what the condition of that individual is, something about, uh, um, maybe the fetus, there may be some problems there. And I don't know what she was brought in for, it could've been a drug charge, so. These are the daily things that we do every day.
How does that cost?
Uh, she's, well, if, if, uh, she's gonna remain, she'll be released on a PR bond. Oh, yeah, I try and get those done as soon as possible. If we know that, uh, they're gonna be in for a period of time, just like this person that was transported out. It's like, we don't need to, we don't need to have that. We contact the judge directly about the, the medical condition, and they generally release the individual on a PR bond. And we're good, we're cut loose, they're, they're actually discharged from the, from the jail. Um, we've had, um, a lot of fires just over the weekend. We had one yesterday, um, that was, uh, two structures, a mobile home and a garage. Looks like that may have started in the garage, but that was over on County Road twenty-nine point seven-five. And, uh, Saturday we had, uh, Fifteen Acre Fire, um, and that started on Ute Mountain Ute Indian Reservation north of the casino, uh, up to, uh, the county line. So that, uh, that actually closed Highway four, four ninety-one, one sixty for about two hours. Um, the, uh, the county resident that lives just on the north side of, of the reservation line, um, they were able to actually, uh, stop that fire there and didn't, didn't threaten any, his home or, or any other structure.
So the individual was there and, and stopped it?
Yeah, well, there was the fire department that got there. He could've never stopped it himself. I'd like to do it today. I really would. I mean, look at the, look at the weather that we've had. It was a great rain, great rain Saturday night. And now the wind is taking everything away today.
Have you talked to the fire chiefs?
Fire chiefs, uh, their meeting that they had last Thursday night, uh, you managed, unanimously stated that they would like to have the fire ban put into effect. So I'm going with their recommendations. I told them that I would bring it to you, and you guys decide what you wanna do. Had a lot of lightning with the last storm. I don't know if there was any.
Yeah, it looked like a lot of cloud to cloud. It looked like a lot of cloud to cloud stuff.
It was a good thing.
Yeah, so I, I did draft a, I don't know who I got, I don't know if it was here, Melinda or Melissa or who.
I think it came from Paul.
Oh, from Paul, yeah. Yeah, he sent us all this.
Hey, uh, so I do have draft, uh, resolution to re-impose the fire ban. Uh, one thing I didn't know for sure, uh, someone mentioned to me that maybe we would just, uh, do it today and that may affect it next week, so, uh, we can maybe eat away, we may affect immediately, which we usually do, or you get, you could worry if you last not to, and affect it next week, um, here's your call, but, uh, and I definitely get.
And I'm good with that. That's probably a good idea to give it some time, you know, um. I hate to have it go in at a certain time today and then all of a sudden, they should not be burning today, but we didn't, not get a red flag warning this morning. That, that's a problem.
I mean, if, if you were to instill it at some point in the future, or whatever, magical Sunday, whatever it is, could you potentially send, um, Nixol? So that everybody has a warning of, hey, this is, is going to go into effect such and such a date? So that they would know and would plan accordingly, you know?
That would be good. And we would do that anyway, like we always have, when it goes in or out.
But actually, we were, I'll tell you, Saturday, must've been Saturday, when we saw the fire down there, we did call in and, cause we had a little pile of stuff, I'm like, I wanna get this burnt.
I know. Everybody was rushing this weekend, I'm telling you. It was funny.
Yeah, and, you know, and the, the, um, dispatch said, you know, no, go ahead, you know, how that stuff goes, so it was, it was interesting, but, but, that was nice.
Yeah. How many days, obviously, you think we need to go to the border?
I'd give them at least five days. I wouldn't put it, I'd put it into effect maybe on Saturday. There's no, I mean, it looks like there's supposed to be some weather that may pass through, but it doesn't look like it's gonna hit us here according to the weather until this morning. Yeah, it's just gonna get cold and then it'll warm back up again on Sunday, so. If you want it to go through, through next weekend and start it on Monday morning, that's up to you.
That would be the better, you week from today, and you people, that weekend.
Okay.
Do you guys have an agreement on the sixteen? Okay, um, we should either display the resolution or I should read it, uh, or you can read it, I don't care. Um, so I'll, I'll go ahead and read it then, and I've got it effective, uh, April sixteen, sixteen, Monday. Okay, uh, it's, it's pretty verbatim, it's what we usually have, except for I changed the title of it just to try to make it less wordy. So it's Resolution Number Five, twenty eighteen, Resolution Reimposing the Fire Ban. Whereas the Monzoma County Board of Commissioners, based on confident evidence, finds the danger of forest and grass fires high throughout the unincorporated area of the county. And that to protect the public health, safety, welfare, it's necessary to reduce danger of wildfires within these areas. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Monzoma County Board of County Commissioners, this file is a resolution nine dash twenty seventeen, suspending the fire, suspending the ban on other fires and use of fireworks, this cancelled pursuant to county ordinance two dash twenty fifteen. But the ban on other fires and use of fireworks is reinstated, continues to full force effect pursuant to ordinance number two dash one fifteen. Now, therefore, be it resolved that this resolution is hereby adopted this ninth day of April twenty eighteen, effective April sixteen, twenty eighteen. If you guys wanna, um, drop that, then, uh, I'll print it out, and have you guys sign it, maybe, uh, I can either print it, I can probably do it right now, or we can do it after lunch.
So, um.
Can you make the motion and move, make a step? Move to approve Resolution Number Five dash two thousand eighteen, a resolution re-imposing the fire ban.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a resolution number five dash two thousand eighteen, uh, to re-impose the fire ban. All in favor?
Aye.
Would it be okay if we, once we get that signed also, to get it on the website, on the front page and everything right immediately? So that everybody has as much opportunity as possible?
If you would send me that, we'll cut it down.
Really similar to all the last ones, except that our previous titles were Resolution Canceling the Suspension of the Fire.
It's confusing, isn't it? Yeah, it is confusing.
Simplify, keep it simple.
Direct.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you. Um, I can't say that we didn't get any marijuana impact funds anymore from our marijuana tax in the state. Uh, the state did, uh, award the impact grant, uh, that were requested, which is, uh, just about sixty-nine hundred dollars from last year's marijuana enforcement, um, overtime hours, so that'll be coming in, and we'll put that back in the, in this year's overtime funds, because, hang on. Um, there's gonna be a lot of enforcement action this year because of the change of the laws. I can tell you that, um, the, the drug enforcement as far as, um, the, uh, large controlled substances, um, that are being imported into our county and being dispersed into the rest of the state and to the United States, um, is happening right here, and those will be coming to a hip. There'll be a lot of cases filed while the process, just wanna let you know.
Is that something that's come from your task force?
Yes, it's been very busy, very busy, so, okay.
Hopefully our, our president's gonna slow that border stuff down.
Well, that wall still isn't built yet, is it?
You're putting the wall with people down, you're walling up people and people.
I know. That would help a lot, but, uh, you know, that's where the majority comes.
Sure it does.
But we're also finding, as you learned, there, there's other ways that they're bringing it into the United States coming here and there, besides the Mexican border, so. All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Go to lunch.
Where is that letter at? Yeah.
Oh, they're gonna give me a copy, great.
We had a, we had somebody in the audience bring this, uh, in our public comment, uh, section about, uh, the sheriff's department promoting, promoting money to help, or.
County sheriffs of Colorado.
Right, and, but it says, Steve Nowlan, Monzoma County Sheriff supports this and, and agreement with this.
That comes out every other year, um, and what it does, it goes toward the, uh, uh, the cost for, uh, the public programs that the County Sheriff's Association puts on, as well as for the every other year, high school graduate, uh, college scholarship funds is what that goes to. It's every other year.
So how, do we know how much of this comes back to Monzoma County? If, if a person, say this person sent in a thousand dollars to this organization?
That's pretty large. I've never heard of that.
Use that for a number, just a number. How much of that would come back to?
Most all of it will come back in one form or another, um, to, because of the, uh, uh, of the things that the association does throughout the state. Every, every sheriff, um, ever since it's been, been born, uh, has, has, has done this, and they, it pays for the, uh, for their publications that go out to, uh, to everyone and whatnot, so.
Well, it says here, your support is crucial and will be used to provide professional training, promote crime and drug prevention, and improve public safety for all of us.
So it pays into the training and the, the crime prevention things that go out, out of the state.
Well, this person wasn't sure, and I'm not sure, I'm sure that we want our sheriff soliciting
Well, I'm not.
Private individuals' monies for contributions to, I mean, I.
Well, it's the County Sheriff's Association, it's not me.
Steve, come on now, come on, buddy, come on. Your name is right there, your signature. This comes from Sheriff Steve Nowland to this person.
Where does it get sent to?
Well, I don't give a damn about that. What I'm saying, they opened this up and the letter says, Steve Nowland, Monzoma County Sheriff, your support is crucial.
Okay, the Morse County gets it, the Platte, every county gets them. They send them out that way, I know. I know. I've never, I've never agreed with it, but it is one of those things that they do every, every other year.
Does every citizen get one, do you know?
I don't know that every citizen does. I really don't. I think past, past people that have donated, I think.
I thought it said something on it that, um, that it was, they're, they're selecting a few or something. I don't think it's a.
It's not a mass mailing, as I know of.
I don't know how to choose who it goes to, but I thought I read that on there. Um, but, but I'm sure you can, uh, you, you can ask them not to send something, I mean, it has your signature on it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They're using their name and your signature.
I didn't sign that, so they, they put it on there. They put it out every, every other year. I know, but you know what? That's, they've used the same thing from the very beginning, so.
Does that answer your question, Ellen?
Well, thank you. Not really. Well, no, I know. My concern was that. Yeah, was that, um, I was curious if there was a targeted
Audience?
Population that you sent that to, because that was sent to an eighty-six-year-old woman.
Yeah, no.
And, um, and it's kind of, um, not inflammatory, but it makes you afraid that there's all this crime and everything. And the statistics on the back are, uh, show, call our state statistics. So it makes it look like it's bad. I mean, it should maybe have Monzoma County statistics on there if you're gonna ask them.
Yeah, and see, that money does not come directly into the church, so.
That's kind of what, I mean, that's what, that's what I'm considering.
I get nothing.
Yeah. But, but in that sentence, it says you get money for training and all this stuff, and.
It pays for the training that all of the, all of the agencies, uh, are open to, like the Institute for Professional, uh, Leadership. That, it pays for that. So those are the leadership programs that every, uh, deputy in the state goes online and they can take these college courses. And so it pays for that. And so there is training available, but it doesn't cost, uh, me, it's just simply from donations and, you know, I, I don't know what to tell you, other than they do that every single, every other year, they put those things out. We get grant funding every other year, uh, for the scholarships, uh, for, uh, Monzoma County Sheriff gets to sponsor a, uh, uh, a graduating senior in one of the, the county schools, that, uh, they send in the applications and, and it goes through our awards committee, and, uh, that person is selected. Uh, we're doing it every year now, um, where the funds that we collected from the, um, employees at the sheriff's office last November, um, are actually, it's a thousand dollar scholarship that I'm putting out this year for a graduating senior. Uh, and then next year, the County Sheriff's Association pays for a scholarship for, uh, for a graduating senior scholarship. So it puts, puts money back into. So it puts, puts money back into um education for our graduating seniors uh that are going on to college. That's what, I have no problem with a, a scholarship program, and that's where it should go, but as far as that goes. You know, that pays for, again, what it says, some training, doesn't pay for everything, that's for sure. Those are at no cost to us because um, where I'm a member of that association as a county sheriff, as all sixty four county sheriffs.
What do you pay to belong to it?
What's that?
What do you pay?
What do I pay? It's about uh, two, twenty-five hundred a year.
Twenty-five hundred, yeah.
And that pays for, uh, that pays for a lot of the uh, the training conferences and whatnot that, that we have and the online stuff.
Are you gonna bring up the letters?
You sent out an email.
Yep. Sent me saying, say we're working on something, so I don't know, I thought it was them, but I never heard from you.
What are, what are you, what's the purpose of the letter? What is it that you want?
I just want access to the fleet mate, just for the, the maintenance of our vehicles and the expenses, cause I, I have no way to tell other than when I, what I get. From fleet, and it's kind of piecemeal, then it's not accurate, and I need to know what our fuel costs are, what the maintenance costs are. Uh, and what the insurance is, which everything has changed.
Your, your costs are fifty-one cents a mile, that's the only thing you need to concern about.
But you absolutely can get access to that, I mean, you just need to get that from.
That's all, that's all I'm asking.
From um Clint?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the public can get that information if they want it.
That's all I'm asking.
Now we can get it.
Yeah, I'm just asking to look at it, so.
But I don't think he's gonna, I don't think he, I, I don't think we're gonna let you access his database at the fleet. What he will do is send you a statement with the vehicle and we, James has got a pretty good plan here, laid out how you get to see what was done to your vehicle and. What parts and labor were put into the vehicle, but uh, but uh, I don't, I don't believe we're gonna give you access to his database and, and access to his computer.
Well, and I'm fully for transparency, so how is it that he can see?
I, I don't know, I mean, have you asked Clint for exactly what you want? And so maybe, you know, if you, if you want me to call Clint and ask him to provide you with, I don't know what, I don't think I've seen this email, I don't know that.
No, we're not asking to change anything, he just wants to see it.
What are you, what are you not getting that you want? What, what are you not getting that you wanna see?
I'm not getting, I'm not getting the maintenance, the vehicle maintenance on every single vehicle that comes in every month. And what the replacement parts were, what the costs were, what the fuel costs were for each vehicle, because I get it, I get it piecemeal, but it's always late and it's always questionable.
But your fuel costs are, are gonna be irrelevant, Steve, you're paying, you pay on a per mileage and that covers the, the fifty-one cents a mile on all of your vehicles pays for everything. It pays for your parts, your fuel, your insurance, your replacement, you don't, you don't get a bill from Clint on a brake job on your.
I get a bill every month, I get a bill every month.
Right, for your mileage, for your mileage.
Right.
Right, your mileage pays for everything.
That's, that's all you're gonna get a bill for, but you do need, I agree that you need, you need to know if.
That's all I'm asking.
You put some, if you sent it in and got a brake job on it, for example. If you knew what the parts were, if you had to replace rotors, or if you had just pads or what, whatever, if you got that information. Uh, what more you would want?
You're not gonna pay for that.
Well, it's coming out of my budget as of now.
It's coming in, your per mi, your per mile charge pays for that.
Right. How, the thing is, is how can I estimate what the costs are going to be per vehicle?
By the number of miles you put them on the road?
Yeah, that's all you have to worry about.
That's all you have to worry about. How many miles are you putting on your vehicle vehicles every month, Steve?
Okay, well, um, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't give me what repair and maintenance were done on every vehicle.
You can get that, you can get that.
That's what I'm asking. This will, this will give you that.
Yeah, you'll get, you'll get exactly what they do to every one of your vehicles every time they're in that shop.
I talked to him the other day and he will put a, a copy of the work order in the vehicle, when you pick it up, it'll be there. He will also email you that copy, and he will also email you your fuel, so you know. How much fuel's been used, you'll know exactly the number of what parts are, are used and whatever, and I, I appreciate that you need that, if you, you know.
I'm just trying to manage it better, I'm telling you that there are discrepancies in mileage that he has even pointed out. I can't fix it if I don't know what the problem is, when you go to a fuel station, you fill up and you don't put in the right mileage for that unit. How am I supposed to know?
That devolves on your deputies.
I don't know that though, Kenan, that's the thing, I don't get that until later, and then it's like, well, okay, who, who used that car that day? That's the thing, and that's where that fuel charge shows that, if I would get that, that's the thing, I don't get that.
You get that.
I'll bet you, I'll bet Clint to make that happen.
He, he has agreed to, to email you that.
Okay.
Information.
Right, that's all I want, I want, I wanna be able to see the expense for every vehicle, that's, I gotta see that, so I know what that is.
Your expense is fifty-one cents a mile.
Okay, the actual cost of what it costs to, to repair that, or to fix that.
You're not gonna get that. He's not gonna, he's not gonna put a price for parts on there, Steve, because that's all inclusive in your mileage charge, okay?
Okay.
So, you're, you're not, you're not gonna pay that.
But that's what's, that's what's charged, that's what's billed every month, is the total mileage, okay?
Right.
And when you have twenty-two thousand one month, eighteen thousand the next month, I mean, you keep going at that rate. I mean, I, I'm afraid that there's not gonna be that amount in there in that line item for the year. What are we gonna do? I'm gonna come and tell you when that is, is down there, okay, and I explain that to Clint. It's like, where can we save costs? Where, where am I gonna be able to save costs? That's what I wanna know.
Not running so many miles, Steve, and not running up and down one forty-five and one sixty.
They're not running up and down one forty-five and one sixty.
Oh, yeah, they are, oh, yeah, they are, I, I see them every day, Steve, and that's where the thing that comes to my mind, why do I have sheriff's deputies running state highways? And parking along state highways and not on County Road twenty-one or County Road fifty?
They are there, they are there, Kenan, look at where the, where the calls for service are at. That's where they go, and that's where they're at, now, if they're working down by the casino, that is being paid for.
I understand, I'm not talking about the casino, I'm not talking about the casino, I'm talking about the highways right out here.
Okay, is that not the closest way to get from one to one? Oftentimes it is, that's the way to get to Dolores, that's the way to get up north. That's the way to get over to Narraguna up at McPee, that's the quickest way to get there, so is that what you're seeing? Cause they are out.
There are also county roads to get there, Steve.
Exactly.
And that's what they are, county sheriffs.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
State highway patrols or state highway.
We're not patrolling on the highway, they're not riding that, okay, for DUI enforcement, they're everywhere, including the highways. But most of it is down south, cause that's where the most traffic is for DUIs, that is, and county roads deep.
Can we get back to the, um, so we're in April, you, and so these first three months, you think that on per mileage that we're gonna go over if we continue?
I haven't seen March as billed yet, so, I don't know.
But January, February?
January and February are high, and so I just wanna know where it can, okay, say those calls. And what it takes, okay, that's all I ask for.
You can take a copy of this one.
Okay.
Thanks, but I, I think that I'll give you the, the information that you need.
Okay.
And he, I, I talked to him the other day, he's agreed to email you all of this information. Work orders and fuel costs and, or fuel usage, I'm not sure what the cost and, and the usage is there.
Okay.
Uh, I haven't seen the fuel report that he sends, but, but he is gonna email it instead of carrying it over to you.
Yeah, and I think you should know who's filling up your vehicles and what, what, what the mileage is that.
So do I.
Well, there's gotta be more than just this person, they, they have the deputy who punches in the, I mean, you, you need to know who's in what car at all times anyway, I mean, that's in a brand.
Okay.
But they should be able to put that fuel mileage in.
You should be able to get me what for the vehicle maintenance and repair, for the fuel, everything that's there, cause that's where it's at.
I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the fuel in Fleet Mate five vehicle, the fuel comes on the fuel bill.
Comes on through Wex, yeah.
There was an issue brought up, somebody brought up about using regular gas versus premium.
Yeah, and I, that's.
So how, how do we know that?
Found out about that in January, but I mean, but how, I mean, that's what I need to know.
Well, cause each one of them is issued, and I don't know how the cards are issued.
They're issued to each car, not to a person.
So there's a card in the car and then they know who's using that car.
Yeah.
And then multiple deputies use those cars.
Yeah, but they all have their own PIN number, their actual badge number, IBM number.
Right.
Okay.
So that you can see the number of gallons per vehicle, so you can tell if that car is getting six miles to the gallon, sixteen miles to the gallon, twenty-six to the gallon, wouldn't that be wonderful?
Yeah.
I would wanna know.
That's all I've asked, I wanna know, and it's just like I keep getting the block, so, let's see what he does, that's all I ask. Okay, anything else? We're good, I'm ready then.
We, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Mary's here for a quick thing and then.
Especially Excelsior out there?
Yeah, they're out there too.
Hi, Mary.
Good morning, Mary.
Okay, this is just a, um, the assurance that we will do what we're supposed to be doing. For C dot, I think there's less words on it than there was last year.
You see, signature here.
Just need a signature on that last page. They told me that I could do it, but I'm not gonna do it.
You're not?
No, I'm not.
No, you're gonna follow the rules.
Well, I'm gonna follow, I'm gonna follow the rules, but I'm not, my name on the bottom of the page.
So he put his name on it saying, you're gonna follow the rules, there you go.
We do the best we can.
That's all you need, just a signature?
That's all I need.
Will you make sure that you can get the copy?
I will, I'll go make the copy right now.
Okay.
Let's talk to Excelsior, James.
Got something from Western Excelsior, come on up.
We got enough for all of you.
Come on up. Morning.
I'll come to the end.
Good, how are you?
Good.
How you doing? That's your name?
Zach Smith.
Hi, Zach. Oh, David, good to see you, David.
What is it?
Howard David. It's a whiskey, how are you?
I'll come to this end then.
Howard David, it's a nice meet you, Howard.
Thanks for getting us on at a short notice.
You're welcome.
Let you go ahead and start if you want.
Well, we've uh, we've been working on uh what to do with uh, with our log issues and moving forward with some sort of an Excelsior plan or. A plan to deal with those logs, and you guys have been part of meetings and discussions somewhat at least. Um, we've uh, in the meantime, we've been visiting with the Zach and Excelsior folks and we've come to. Uh, preliminary, preliminary agreement for us to uh attempt to purchase uh the Manx facilities, uh property, log deck, and equipment. And, and we're moving forward with the process to try to accomplish that. Uh, we've had discussions with USDA, you know, the, the point contact you gave us, as well as uh, as well as the. Local banks and SBA and whatever else means and ways of, of getting this off the ground. Um, this is gonna be quite an effort to attempt to not only salvage what's left. But, you know, an effort to start the, start it up and, and reemploy some of the folks um that are, that are gone. We've uh, uh, offered or, or our intent is at least to um. Bring, bring on the employees that they currently have, or at least, at least some of them, and rehire um several more uh from their staff. So we'll be, our intent is to, to bring those folks on that lost jobs, um, or potentially losing their jobs, um, for the, for the sake of this venture. And uh, our, our hope and plan is to be moving forward uh by the summer with uh having that, that mill at least at, at a smaller capacity back into operation.
And are you still working on that right now, as we speak?
That's what we're doing right now, yeah.
Have you come to the buy-sell agreement, David?
Yes.
And you're just, have you got your financing in place?
No.
Not yet?
No, and that's what we're working on, is, is what, what we need and can do, you know, it's the combinations of. Of all that it takes to get this going off the ground is, uh, might be a little bit beyond uh some conventional, conventional sources. So we're, we're seeking any, any kind of assistance and help that's available to, to help, one expedite it, one make it happen, I guess, and two expedite it.
Are the owners, are, is uh Western Excelsior interested in financing, carrying part of your, part of your debt?
We would prefer not to.
How far are you with USDA?
We're, we're going through the, the business plan, financial forecast, we've been meeting with, with uh their recommended local bank. It's, it's gotta be through them and then USDA, the program that we're talking about um with USDA is, is uh, is a guaranteed program. Uh, we went through the, the process, as you know, when they burnt, um, you guys made the declaration of the disaster.
Disaster.
So we went through that process, um, and, and a week ago Saturday, in fact, I just got the letter in the mail. Friday, I guess, uh, we've, we've been declined, the SBA economic disaster, they acknowledged our impact, that we were impacted. Um, but, but because for us to utilize the logs that we have to, the P O L logs that, that had, we had been selling to Western. SBA, that program considers that business expansion for us instead of uh.
Recovery.
Instead of a recovery to deal with the, the inventory impact, so they acknowledged it, they accepted it, sent the program, they started through the process. I had a dozen, however many calls with the SBA disaster loan officer. And uh, finally, at the end of the day, he called back and he says, well, this is a expansion, you know, and I tried to explain again.
Two different things.
I said, we're not expanding anything, we're dealing with the results of this, and he says, well, we understand and we agree you're impacted, but we can't help you. So, so we've been denied from that process because of their view of, of what we're trying to do. And I, I tried to, I tried to be real careful to explain the, that, I mean, this is an inventory, you know, impact on us more than anything else. So anyway, um, we've gone through that step and, and, and they formally notified us that they, they pulled our application, so that's, that's not.
That was just through the disaster money, so, but you're still qualified for SBA and, and other, other types.
That's what we're working on, yeah, yeah, and the USDA, there are some um, you know, uh stipulations, guidelines within USDA as far as equity ratios and all of the ratio stuff.
Yeah, that's all.
That they get into, so, that's still yet to be determined, we don't have a, we don't have a go, no-go from them, but uh.
Do you have any local banks interested in helping, David? Have you had any success with any local?
We, we've not approached anybody else yet.
Who are you working with, through with SBA?
For Southwest, that's the, that's the USDA approved, they've got their list of approved lenders, so. So that's, that's all we've talked to so far. Um, I mean, we talked to banks that we use, but.
Have you worked out a lease or anything with Snyder's to, uh, lease until you can get this done? And you, have you worked out any?
We've not got that far yet.
No, we haven't. I think we're kinda just working together on everything, you know, it's been more of just a verbal and handshake kinda deal, which is easy for us. I think it's easy for you too, but, uh, we're ready to move forward with it. We wanna, we wanna make it as easy of a transition for David really as possible because of the opportunity that we see. You know, for us, on the, on the erosion market side, a lot of the wood fiber products have fallen off. There's still a market, but there's definitely a market for bales. Um, but to do that as its own entity is, would be difficult. And so from what we see that he can do on the wood buying and shipping, you know, sorting and shipping, um, it's, it's almost a perfect scenario with what he can do with the Walwood side and then the Excelsior side. Um, but yeah, I mean, we're, we're here to support him and then really just to ask if there's anything that can be done to move the financing side along, um.
Did you come out whole with your insurance claim, with your insurance company?
Well, if that's still.
How do you find whole?
Yeah. No, um, part of it, uh, part of it, yes, they basically depreciate value, everything, and they've, they haven't sent us everything on that. They're supposed to be doing that right now, the final payment, but then the rest of it is, um, as you spend the money, they, they pay you the difference in what you spent. Um, we've started a facility in Dallas, Texas, or Campbell, Texas, um, so we have spent some. The other side, you know, we're, we're still losing money at the plant. And so there is business interruption, our business income insurance, and that's been more of a challenge in terms of, they don't just look at your financial statements and say, we agree with this. They, they scrutinize every penny in terms of, well, was this really business interruption? Or especially, the hard part is when we ship something, you know, we're trying to maintain the customer base and ship out of Evansville or Georgia. And they look at that and say, well, you shipped it out of another location, so all that profit comes off of here. So there's the business interruption piece and then is the biggest part that we're not whole on. Um, and they've been somewhat difficult to work with on that. Um, but in terms of the equipment side, they've been pretty good.
Can your other bu- business interests use any thing that he would make?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Is, is the equipment in place to?
A, a part of it is, and you know, one, one of our interests, um, there's a number of pieces of equipment that they have had to have that we've not needed for our, the peeler is the biggest piece, for instance. Um, and even the fact that there's a building there, uh, makes a lot of difference. All of our mill is outside, um, and in the yard. We don't have, we don't physically have space for additional logs. Uh, but the peeler in place, the, the truck scales in place, um, there's a, a loader crane in place, and, you know, and, and the rolling stock that they have, um, to handle the logs, the, the log handling equipment. Um, you know, we had been discussing another piece of property that was closer to us, that we could attempt to share, um, equipment and scales and things. You know, when you start doing it with the Forest Service, you know, you, you've gotta have scaling, scaling locations that are approved and in place, and there's stipulations from them. They've got all of that in place. So there's, there's a number of advantages that we see in, in taking up, and that property is fenced and it's, you know, it's all, I mean, the town of Mankas is the town of Mankas, but.
Would you, would you move your operation from Aspen Walwood if this deal went through, you wouldn't, you wouldn't consolidate one location perhaps?
No, I think, anytime in the near future, it'd be cost prohibitive for us to.
Move everything.
To move, the time it would take, and I, I mean, you know, the typical sawmill is, two-thirds of it is fabricated in place for your product. So to relocate that would be a challenge, or to set up a new one for that matter, uh, would be, uh, a real challenge for us. And, and, you know, what we have for the products that we make today are, it, it's good. Um, we see a lot of advantage in mov- moving into the Excelsior, um, with our byproducts that we currently have and our log sorting. You know, there's, um, I, I think, I think we'll see a lot of benefits of mutually, mutually doing this and the two locations. So, so that's, I don't think that's much of a challenge for us really.
What do you see that we can help?
Well, if you have sources to the governor's office, I mean, we've, we've pursued grants, we, you know, we've gone down Grant Avenue, we've gone down the SBA disaster avenue. Uh, you know, we certainly have their, their tax, at least entry. I, you know, I don't know that we need long-term stuff. It's just getting, getting this over the hump, um, that would help the bank. If there, if there are funds, whether it's, you know, economic development through the governor's office, like I said, support to back that, um, additionally through USDA, um, you know, we. Whatever sources of revenue are out there, the grants we've looked at are all.
You checked out, you're, you, you should fall within an enterprise zone, should you not, David?
We are, we are, and we've signed up for the enterprise zone with, with Region Nine.
Okay, so.
You know, we've talked to Region Nine.
So should be some tax advantages there and some?
Yeah, for, from equipment, for, for just standpoint, that's right. Um, you know, I, we're not after handout, we're after all the help we can to, to get this back up as quickly as we can, um, so that the folks that are about, the remaining folks that are about to lose their jobs could continue on with jobs.
Do you know what your stumbling blocks are with these lending institutions with Southwest?
Uh, USDA, USDA doesn't lend based on, uh, their, their standard is based on, um, the cash value, not, not value to loan ra- ratio. So we call, we, we, you know, both the equity ratios that we run into, you know, my, my biggest, biggest challenge is we've only had, I've only had Aspen Walwood for two years.
I know, yeah.
So I'm still in a, I'm still in a, I'm still in the startup phase, essentially with that. So, you know, so my debt-to-equity ratio is, is a little bit challenged. Um, so that's number one. And then number two with USDA, like I said, they don't look at it as value to loan ratio, they look at that cash to loan ratio.
Can you show them cash flow projections that you?
Oh, I've done, oh, yeah, we're, we've done all that.
Cause that, that.
We're ju- we're jumping through all those hoops.
That should be the, that, that to me would be, that would be the kicker for me, if you can, if you can sit down and show me what your, your loan value is and then what your cash flow ratio show you and how you're gonna cash flow the loan. That's, I mean, that's what you make loans on, is how they cash flow.
And I, I think we're just demonstrating that, but, you know, you're, you're.
Yeah.
Not, we're in the, the lending realm, so, you know, we're talking to bankers.
That's a dangerous realm.
Look out.
The head of the state, uh, is a lady by the name of Sally Clark for the USDA, and, uh, we, I'll call her for you.
Let's get her, let's get her involved in this and see if we can get her.
I met with the lady that says that I'm the one that controls eight billion a year. I'm where the River Hyster Road in Washington DC three weeks ago. Um, I'll talk to Sally.
Yeah, that, that's the kind of assistance that we're, you know, I mean, we're not talk, we're not talking, we're not talking eight billion dollars.
Yeah, they got two hundred twenty billion dollars out there right now in loans.
But it's your, it's your pinch of that.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we just need that kind of assistance. You know, we, we feel like this can cash flow, we feel like we can make it work.
Sure.
Um, you know, working with Zack, I think we've come to terms on everything. We're, we're in the process of legali- formally, formalizing it.
Right.
Um, and I think we're real close to that. And so we've got attorneys involved and we've got, and we've put the projections together and, you know, we're, we're jumping through all the hoops to make this happen. It's just, it's just, there's a lot of hoops.
Well, because she came, she actually came down and met with us commissioners and she, what you're talking about is exactly what she brought up. This is on, she's brand new, she just got elected by, uh, the president.
Got appointed.
Just appointed not very long ago, and she said, this is what I wanna do. Well, boy, if your guys', uh, business model isn't the exact.
Doesn't fit, doesn't fit what they're.
Yeah. Well, and then the challenge, one of the challenges, not, not to belabor this, but one of the challenges with US, within USDA is, it's forestry doesn't necessarily fit into ag-based stuff so much. So there, we end up kind of on the fringe of, does it apply or does it not apply? Um, but you know, even with the Forest Service, there's, in fact, I'm going to a meeting this afternoon with their biomass financing thing they're trying to put together too, so, you know, we're, we're working with the agencies.
They need to start making those forests crops up there. I mean, they, they, I, I mean, in a, in a real sense of the word, they should be that way. That's what they should be and the way they should be treated, and they need to be harvested and rotated, and so, so I think it's time to put Sally to the test, see what we can, see what we can do.
Well, we, we, we've, we're motivated and, and we feel like we've got a real.
And our community wants to keep that business there.
And we wanna keep the jobs in this county, and we wanna keep the, the forest getting harvested and, uh, everything that that deal represents is good stuff for our county and, and good for the forest. I, I assume the Forest Service is supporting you very heavily on this, aren't they?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're absolutely. Yeah, I think, I think we're getting all of the, the.
Support, you mean?
We're getting all of the verbal support.
Verbal support.
We're getting a lot of pats on the back for what our effort is.
Need a little cash to go with it, huh?
You know, it's just now, we just gotta make it work, and, uh, and so, and we need all that we can get to, to help move the places that we don't have access to help move forward with.
Does her, the, um, is, I think his name's Dale, is that, is that right? He works here in the office.
Yeah, I've, I have not actually talked to him. There was another lady, and I apologize for not remembering her name.
Okay.
But I, I called the, the card you gave me, and they funneled me right to somebody else.
Okay.
Uh, we, at this point, we're actually not interfacing directly with USDA. It's, we're interfacing with the bank to get everything or everything in order to be able to go to them. Um, but we're, we're meeting their, their requirements. I mean, they've gotta have a Phase One environmental study, we've ordered that, um, so that's, that's going to happen. Unfortunately, Zack had already had that done not too far in the past, saying we've provided that to them, so they're, you know, they've got some, some foundation for that work. And we don't expect to have any, uh, issues with that. But we've done that, we've gotta go through, USDA is requiring, well, potentially a feasibility study, we're trying to figure out what does that mean? What does it take to do that? You know, all of these things just take, take a tremendous amount of time and to try to make our, the timing work from what they're trying to do and what we need to do with our timber.
Fifty-year piece of going study.
Are, are the logs gonna, I mean, the, the time it's taking, is there gonna be any deterioration in the logs that's gonna be a problem?
Right, well, the logs that are in their yard have a, have a shelf life. There'll be some issue there. Currently, we've got two hundred loads of logs setting up in the forest, uh, both on the state ground, up by Groundhog and, and on the various cells that we have. Um, that, that we will have to bring in someplace and have to deal with. Um, and if we can get this, if we can get this off the ground and, and, and close on this, then we'll start hauling those logs in. So we'll put some truckers to work. I mean, right now, we've got, we're getting phone calls every day, hey, can, can I work, can I work? And until we have a home for those logs, you know, I, I, we can't work. So, so we'll, we'll immediately put some folks to work, um, that are sitting at home, um, and some of these cells will be up at Groundhog, you know, as soon as, as soon as we can. Well, we're actually going back up to the pine right now. Uh, we were a little bitter on a, on a timber cell, on another pine timber cell, and, uh, we're going back in, in the pine and start taking some more of the beetle kill out. Uh, that market's developing for us, uh, pretty well, and then from there, we'll go back up to the Aspen. As soon as we're back up there, we'll have to start taking the, well, out of the, the decks, especially off the state ground. So I've, we're, we're, we're running into some timelines, um, to get those logs out of the woods, um, or, or pay some substantial fees, uh, to do something with them, you know, so.
Do you wanna tell them that we're regrowling that road bank out so the trucks can handle it?
You can't get up there in the snow anyway.
Not yet.
Well, you know, honestly, this winter, we were, we, we, we were able to still log at ten thousand feet, so.
No kidding.
We, we, we stopped because we had to get to the pine, not because of the snow that killed us, which is super unusual. So.
David, keep us informed and let us know where we can, what, what we can do to help, and we'll, I think with Mary Dawn's contact with Sally is, is starting.
Please.
And, uh, any, any, anybody else you'd like for us to try and involve in this or contact, we try and help in any way we can?
Well, like I said, if there's something to the governor's office, you know, prompt Region Nine or whatever, we're.
Have you approached Region Nine for a loan?
We already have, uh, some lending in place to Region Nine. Uh, the scope of this falls outside of their, of their abilities. You know, it's not huge, but it, it's big enough. So, um, I think, I think Region Nine will be, I think the bank is intending on bring, trying to bring Region Nine in for some additional stuff. I don't know what that means yet. Uh, but, but yeah, we're, we have been talking with them.
You might be interested in it with Region Nine.
Yeah. If it's, it takes various sources, it takes various sources, and that's, that is what it is.
We certainly hope everything jails together here for you. I know we're pulling for you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, yeah. Keep our fingers crossed.
Zack, you got me.
Thank you.
Take care. Keep them rolling over, would you? David?
I have a couple of really easy things, if you wanna do this. Um, we received a letter of resignation from Sue Patterson from the, um, Ariola Cemetery Board. She was put on there when, when they couldn't get anybody to do it. We have someone who lives inside the boundaries that will take over the position. And Sue said she would turn that over to the new person so that would actually be within the boundary of, of that, um, district. So Sue Patterson is the resignee, and Lindy Tate is the.
New appointee.
I guess that's how that works.
I would move that we accept the resignation of Sue Patterson from the Ariola Community Center, Ariola Community Cemetery District Board. And accept Lindy L. Tate as her replacement on that board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept resignation from Sue Patterson from the Ariola Cemetery District Board. And accept Linda Tate as her replacement on the board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Melissa, do you know what term that is?
Uh, it's, it would be.
I think they're all the same amount.
They're all, they're six-year terms, so with, with her coming in, I don't.
She's just filling the term.
She'll be fulfilling.
I'll, I'll look that up.
But I think that, that we just need to be clear on that.
We fill, we'll fill that term.
She's appointed for the remainder of the term.
Okay, I can do that. And Kim, I don't have those letters ready yet, so.
Do we need a motion to approve this letter to be sent out to all the department heads?
I think that would be a good.
Which letter?
The, um.
On the fleet.
Oh, sure. Is it coming from the commissioners?
Yes.
Are you ready? Sorry, is that it?
That one's on the.
It is the same one, yeah.
Same thing.
To the department heads and elected officials about, um, the fleet vehicles being charged the fifty-one cents with their ownership of the fleet.
So we've never sent that out?
Not yet.
We.
It's kind of a reiteration.
Yeah.
I think it's getting it in black and white. I think we, it was discussed with all of them.
We have, and we've sent out a memo to them, but I think a lot of it is understanding, everybody still thinks that those vehicles are mine.
Right there, yeah, they're mine set.
You know, that the, that the suburban, that the commissioners drive is the commissioners', which is really fleets.
The, this just changes some of the procedures. This just changes some of the procedures, so everybody knows what's going on.
I would move that the letter to all elected Monza County Department Heads and Officials describing fleet procedures be approved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded through the letter to all the Monza County officials and elected officials and department heads concerning the fleet procedures on our vehicles. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you got Melissa?
I have one more, one more thing that's really easy. We received funds from the Secure Rural Schools funding, the SRS funding, and what we've always done with that in the past is twenty-five percent goes to the county road fund, and seventy-five percent is split amongst the school districts according to a percentage of their student count. You know, I mean, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And I just, in the past, we've always had these letters, but there was always, it said, at the meeting of the Board of County Commissioners on such and such a date, the commissioners voted to distribute these funds directly to the schools via that formula. So if you wouldn't mind, um-
Can we have a discussion about that first?
Sure.
Do we have to do it that way? I thought we had used some SRS funding for the, for the mussels inspections.
For SR? I don't know.
I don't know either. Did we use some of that? Were we able to?
I, I thought that that's what we-
Well, that was-
Where's James? He would know, James did read.
Um, I don't think it was, what was it? I'm, I do not know.
I want you to change the seventy-five percent to the, from the school districts to teachers' salaries.
It's hardly any, just so you know. I mean-
They're getting hardly any now.
The, the SRS funds, Secure Rural Schools, how did we-
Didn't we use some to help pay one year for the mussels two years ago?
I don't recall it being used for that.
We did, we had some funding that we used. Was it-
And I don't know what went to the mussels. The SRS stuff usually went to the wildfire plant.
Well, that's different than what this is.
There was another pot of money. Let me do some more looking at lunchtime. I can't remember. There was, where it went to the rack board. It was projects of, of money that came through with the Forest Service and where we shifted some of that money, but I don't think it was SRS. It was-
There been a road money?
I would like to make sure we get it right, because I'm pretty sure that, well, I'm not pretty sure, but I know there was a pot of money that we had used to help fund for the inspection of mussels two years ago, when the Forest Service didn't have enough, and they came to us and said we're going to close the key lake down because, and we helped.
I'm blank on that. I'm blank.
I know what you're talking about, but I can't, I'm-
Is this, is this allocation by the state? Is, is this how this allocation is?
It's federal government for, for, comes from the logging, actually, these guys right here.
Right, right.
What it is, is an offset from when, if they're logging like they used to log, we wouldn't need SRS. That, that's an offset for the, the revenue loss, because the counties get twenty-five percent of all of the grazing leases, all of-
Timbering.
Timbering, uh, that comes off of the forest.
And there's so little of it going on now, this is a, a re-supplement, it's like pill.
Yeah.
It's like a pill.
And I, I can't remember the difference in, in that authorization when we asked for that, whether we asked them to help offset the, that was money that we got to help funnel, but it wasn't money that came directly to the county. This is money that actually the treasurer actually gets. And I, and I can't remember the funding source that you, I know what you're talking about, but I'm, I'm-
Can we verify it before we make a decision on it?
Yeah, that's fine. But I, it was, it was a recommendation that went to a rack board? Do you remember that?
Yeah.
That seems right.
But I can't remember what that funding source was. I'll have to go back and-
I know. So Rob actually was the one that I believe, we need to talk to Rob in the heart, because we split some money up of this SRS, I believe, with the mussels, when we had did that a couple of years ago. I think he-
Something out of his road and bridge fund?
Yeah. So let's contact Rob.
I'm blank.
What is the amount?
The total amount is twenty, twenty-five thousand, two nineteen sixty-four.
Bob will know. That, that's who we need to talk to.
Okay.
You know, I'd like to, do you have anything? That vote that, that we did on the wastewater last week. So there's a lot of things that people that I've talked to that-
That forty-three, that regulation forty-
Yes, there was opposition to that. There was letters written, and I could see where they could have maybe been lost in emails or such. But, but I have been approached by multiple people that that wastewater proposition forty-three should just be for the Dolores River and not for the rest of the county. And I really, I really feel like I, I made the wrong decision on proposing that there's county wide instead of-
So it's not, hasn't been finalized and adopted yet?
Oh, really?
Yeah, I mean, she, she's, I think that, you know, we're going to know in a, in a couple of months. I mean, I'll touch base with her, but my understanding was it needs to get approved, and she was just getting you guys' okay to go ahead and send it to, to the state for approval. So if you guys want to re-assess-
I would like to re-
Apparently-
Even if I'm wrong, you all can-
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we have Melissa come back in and, and rediscuss that? If there have been things brought to light by people that you've discussed this with, that maybe-
There's some opposition out there, you know.
Why don't you look and inform her though, what it is, so that she can come to us?
Well, the first thing what I would like her to do is to get in the county suburban and show us how many systems have failed out in the county. Just take us around, show us three.
I'll bet she doesn't know. I mean, I'll bet she doesn't.
But that's the whole case for this, is that, you know, uh, systems that are failing.
Yeah. But I think, was it tied to, the only time that they were going to do that inspection is at the change of title, when you have a, a sale on a, on a piece of property that has a septic system that's out on the north side of twenty years old? I mean, there's a lot of parameters around when and if that thing is ever inspected. And I think it, I mean, I, I don't know what, what you heard or been told, but it seems like-
You had brought it up in a meeting last week. You had brought it up that when you had, had, was selling some property, that, that seller or the, the buyer-
Right.
Will hire somebody. I mean, buyer beware. If you, if you want to, uh, I tell you what I've been told. It's just a way for government, it's, it's a grab to get, to get in there and, and get a fee. I really believe that we don't have a problem in the county. I believe that we have a concern in the Dolores River. I believe that that's our drinking water.
No.
And that those systems, uh, just, I mean, you, I planted so many trees up and down that river. You dig down two feet and you hit, you hit that, uh-
It's all water cable and gravel, yeah.
It's all rock and gravel. It's completely different in that valley than it is the rest of the county. And I've been told it's just another way for, by more than one, for government to get their hands in business where it doesn't need to be.
So if, I mean, just saying, if you reevaluate that or whatever, would you have to draw boundaries?
Well, if I could do it again, I would say that it's for Dolores River Valley, and let's do it for a year, and let's see what happens.
And, and would you have to set boundaries in the Dolores River Valley so far from the river, or something like that? Would it-
No, just, you can throw a rock. You can't hit it with a rock. No, I don't.
We even sit, have, see, we throw.
I don't think that, it's the-
Yeah, but you're talking, you're talking any residential structure, places up there, they're putting in septic systems in that, in that Dolores River bottom.
I know of some that have failed in that Dolores River. It's just because there's only two foot of dirt. That's why they got to do the mound systems, where you go anywhere out in this county, and you've got, you've got a lot more dirt. You know, it's just different.
And most of us, I mean, have probably lived in our own homes. I mean, the house that we have is twenty-three years old. So, I mean, if I were to sell my house, it would hit me for it to be inspected, you know? I mean, I don't think any of us have homes that are new.
And, and I, and I take that back, just from my personal experience here, recently selling a piece of property. You know, the buyer's inspector, the buyer sends in a home inspector, and they go through your home, whatever you're selling, and they go from the foundation right through the roof. And his recommend was to, to have the septic tank pumped and checked when, before they do it. And so that became part of the buyer's recommends or items for the seller to take care of before they, before they close the deal. And so, so I have a, I'm not sure that we need to involve, if, if that's going to necessarily involve the, the county when, when you have home inspectors and, and changes of property that are, that they require those inspect, those sewage systems to be inspected upon the sale of the property themselves. So I, I don't know if they need another layer, need the county, and they're saying you'll, you'll also do it. But it seems like the wise home buyer is going to do that anyway. I mean, they're going to make sure-
Is there a timeframe that, before that goes?
Let's touch base there. I, I think it was, I think it was a while. I think we had a long time, but I, I need to follow up with the therapist.
Let's, let's tell them we want to re- rehash it, re- rediscover this, whether there's some things come to light that we want to, want to talk to you about. I'm good with that, yeah. Nothing's written in rock yet.
If I remember right, it's either June first or June thirtieth.
Yeah, I think it was somewhere right around the June, June, yeah.
Well, in the next few days, could you do that, Melissa?
Sure. Do you want to, um, to report on system failures when she comes? I mean, if she knows numbers or, or locations or-
County, out of Dolores River Basin.
Okay.
Ready to adjourn for lunch?
I'm ready.
I'm hungry.
Are you? Well, then that means it's time for lunch.
Be well with adjourned for lunch then.